I don't think they can hear me. Okay. Okay, we are about to begin. Could everyone please be seated? Thank you. Everyone, please be seated. We're about ready to begin our meeting. Thank you very much. Okay, all's well. Thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone. I call this city council meeting to order on August the 13th, 2024. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Hazel Mejia, who is from the Mariposa Kids Club student. And also invocation will be Reverend Grady Jones, New Commandment Missionary Baptist Church. Everyone, please stand. Thank you.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. You try and God our Father, I make my prayer again to come for your presence. Thank you for another day. It's come tonight, Father, come with joy and praise in hearts for our retiring city attorney of five goals who served at that post before him. One is coming in to give them the knowledge to guide this city. Always pray, always pray for our leaders, our citizens, Father God, that they'll keep me personal and will. Our nation, nation leaders. There are so much turmoil in America throughout the world right now, Father, we need to intervene and have all people believe in you. Again, we thank you for what's been done for this city through this administration, for every citizen in this city. If it's all to understand, Father, we may not do it for night, but joy come in the morning. America needs some joy right now. America needs some blessing and praise. Keep this country in the city, pray for divine will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Aguayo.
Here.
Councilmember Olmos.
Here.
Councilmember Quayre Stallings. Vice Mayor.
Here.
Lemons. Mayor Del Cadeo.
Present. Okay, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. Tonight, we are recognizing several special members of the Paramount community. But first, we are going to share a short video from our National Night Out celebration during the summer concert at Progress Park. Everyone had a blast and really enjoyed getting to know our public safety team and local deputies. Afterwards, my colleagues and I will gather at the podium. Thank you. Wonderful video community services. Now colleagues, we may go to the podium, please. Would Hazel Mejia please come back up? Hazel is a PUSD student who joined the Mariposa Kids Club at the Mariposa Learning Center this summer. The Mariposa Kids Club is a free drop-in program where kids ages five through 12 can play games, do crafts, and engage in outdoor adventures and attend exciting excursions. Thank you for leading us in the pledge. And now we'll take a photo, Hazel. Yes. Thank you, Hazel. Now, I am happy to present the next Mayor's Gold Key Award to a very deserving Paramount resident and business owner. Would Bertha Jimenez please join us? Are you here, Bertha? I don't see her. Well, let me read her bio. Ms. Jimenez has been a proud Paramount resident for over 20 years. She is a licensed esthetician with her very own business here in Paramount, the Art Jimenez Studio. Many of you may recognize Ms. Jimenez from some of our city events as a face paintist artist. Last spring, she turned our council members into cute bunny rabbits for our Dia de los Niños celebration. Before that, she turned all of us into characters from The Three Little Pigs. Along with working closely with our community services department, Ms. Jimenez is very active in Paramount. She currently serves as a member of several Paramount groups, including the Paramount Tiffic Sister Cities Committee, the Paramount Historical Committee, and she is an ambassador for the Paramount Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Ms. Jimenez, for your continued support and dedication to our community. We are so happy to have business owners and residents like you who take time from their busy schedule to serve our community. Now, yes, that's Bertha. Now, with summer vacation coming to a close, August is back-to-school month in Paramount. In celebration of this, the city hosted our fourth annual back-to-school event this past weekend. We presented families in need with backpacks, school supplies, clothing, and haircuts, all for free. This year, we had 11 various generous donors who contributed money, services, and goods to make this event happen. Thanks to their support, we were able to help over 500 TK through eight grades kids to get ready for the school new year. Any donor representatives, please come up as I mention your name, and we'll take a group photo. Okay, Supervisor Janice Hahn? Athen Services, are you here? Yes. Bimbo Bakeries? Downey Federal Credit Union? Inkhead Prints? Musa? Royals Barber Shop? Royals Barber Shop, anyone? Okay. Stylist Alicia Anderson? Stylist Denise Hernandez? Tripeki Smith? Exclusive Routes? And World Energy? Thank you all so much for helping our kids. Now, let's take a photo.
Hey, Madam Mayor, as you're heading down to the podium, Ms. Bertha Jimenez has arrived, so if you want to...
Yes, I will.
Go ahead, sweetie. Go ahead.
I'm not prepared. As you can see, I'm rushing in, but I was driving across the police station, so I couldn't speak. But anyhow. I'm just grateful. I didn't expect this. You know, I'm a woman of faith and I truly do want to be a cheerful giver, and everything that I do, I do it with the kindness of my heart, and this was not expected. I know it's not a lot. Some people might not mean anything, but it does to me. I'm very emotional. I've been here before and cried, but I'm just so happy with, you know, the leadership in this city. I've been 20 years here in the city of Paramount and also run my business here, and I'm just so proud to live in the city. I can see the changes, and I'm just so happy with all the councilwomen as well, how much they support businesses and also our residents. So just thank you so much.
You're welcome. We'll do it. We'll have a replay. Okay, next, we would like Diane Nichols from the Children's Clinic. Please join us. In celebration of August as National Wellness Month, we have invited Diane Nichols, the Director of Development and Communication from the Children's Clinic, to accept our proclamation. Wellness Month focuses on self-care, managing stress, and promoting healthy routines. When we follow through in these areas, we can lead better and healthier lives. And it doesn't have to be a drastic change. You can start small, drink more water, add more fruits and vegetables to your meals, and you can even join our senior Road Runners for a refreshing walk around our community. This month, we highlight the work that the Children's Clinic does in our community. Thank you for providing quality health services to our residents of all ages. Diane, would you like to say a few words? You're welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you so much for this recognition of the Children's Clinic, also known as TCC Family Health. As we see, started about 85 years ago, just seeing children in the community, and then expanded to adults and seniors as well. So we see about a little over 1,000 residents from the city of Paramount in our 13 sites that are surrounded all around the city of Paramount and Bellflower. And I just want to say thank you so much. I'm also a resident of the city of Paramount here now for over 11 years. So I love Paramount and everything that the city is doing to help the residents make it a wonderful community. I brought some patient services brochures that we can, you know, give out to the community members to just keep letting them know that TCC Family Health is here to provide comprehensive health and wellness services.
All right, thank you, Diane. And we have the proclamation for you. A photo during the proclamation. So let's stand here, and we can take a picture. Now, the moment has finally arrived. Our final presentation is once again bittersweet as we recognize the retirement of our longtime city attorney. Would you like to come up, please? Would John Kavanoff please come up? In 1997, Mr. Kavanoff joined the city as an attorney with the Woodruff, Spredlin, and Smart Law Firm. Now, after 27 years, he is leaving behind a legacy that will be remembered for years to come. Mr. Kavanoff has a key figure in the success of several major projects that have transformed our community. He was instrumental in drafting the negotiation land agreements for the Civic Center Plaza, the Paramount Pond, and the Home Depot. These projects were not just about development, they were about re-imaging our city. Together, we were able to revitalize these properties and bring in new businesses that enhance the beauty and the appeal of Paramount. Join us as you embark on this new chapter of your life. We wish you all the best in your retirement. Please know that your contributions have made a lasting impact on our community. Congratulations, and we wish you well. Now, would any of my colleagues like to say a few words? Vice Mayor Lemons?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I was fortunate enough to be among the city council that actually selected John to serve as our city manager. And I'm going to share with you a little story that actually put him over the hump when we were at a crossroads of choosing between three different attorney firms that had applied. So at the time, I was working as the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, and my staff came back to me in my office, and they said, there's an attorney out front who wants to speak to the executive director. So, okay, I go out, and this gentleman starts asking me questions about the demographics in Paramount, and, you know, how does the community react to certain issues? And then it gets to the question, and what about the city council? Well, I also happened to be serving as a city council member at that time. So I said, oh, I'm sorry, we'll have to end this interview, and you'll have to speak to one of my staff. And he looked a little stunned, like, why? And I said, I'm actually a city council member too, so it wouldn't be appropriate. And he was like, oh, oh, did I ruin my chances? I said, absolutely not. So when we were in the boardroom and we were discussing which attorney we would select, it's one of the things that I shared with my fellow council members. I said, you know, this gentleman was the only one who came to the community and asked about it. You know, what's important to the community? How do you feel they need to move forward? How can I be of service? And that's what he's given us for 27 years. You know, we have a saying, the Paramount Way. And what the Paramount Way means to us is you go that extra mile. You bend over backwards, and you do whatever you need to do to help the residents and to help Paramount move forward. And John's certainly been part of the Paramount Way, and we're so grateful for all of his years of service and his dedication and the wisdom he's given us. And John, I have for you a box of chocolates because, you know, life's like a box of chocolates. You never know what you're gonna get.
Councilmember Olmos?
Where do I begin? Actually, when I came on in 2019, I was appointed at that time. I wasn't elected until 2020. And that was a really hard decision for me because I really wanted to run, be elected by the people. And there was a lot of kind of going back and forth. And, you know, I just want to say thank you for having that open door to me, to listen to me, to my concerns, my questions, the guidance, the patience. Because I know I probably called you like 100 times that first week. Can I do this? Can I do that? Am I allowed to do this? Because, you know, we're new. We don't really know what we can and can't do until we learn. But again, I just want to say thank you for all the support that you've given all of us as women. I know I said I'm sure your phone is ringing off the hook a lot of times, but again, open-door policy, and you just always said, I'm here to support you. And there's going to be some hard shoes to fill, my friend John. We're gonna have to find somebody just like you in a suit and shoes. But again, thank you for everything.
Councilmember Aguayo?
This is a tough one. You know, many of you have heard how tough, you know, I mean, just the previous years for me personally. And that open-door policy, like, you know, I'm sure my colleagues all agree, it was a blessing for us. I know you are a man of faith because we have talked about that. And thank you. Thank you for your support. Thank you for the prayers that I'm sure, you know, were always, always there. You're gonna be missed around here.
Councilmember Quayre Stallings, please.
Where do I begin? When I came on board as a city commissioner several years ago, before I became council, I was chosen to be on a committee, and I didn't know I was going to have the honor of meeting John. And you remember that?
Mm-hmm.
And I was selected to be on a committee for a few months. And when I met him, I knew that he had a heart out for Paramount, and he wanted to know, as a private resident at that time, what were the needs of Paramount? And I told him, you know, this is what we need. And he had a listen ear, and he followed through. As a council member, as my colleague said, he does have an open-door policy, even the phone calls on Sunday evening at 7:00 as he's working in his garage. And I told, I asked John, you know, several questions. Am I allowed, just like Brenda and my colleagues, am I allowed to do this? Am I allowed to do that? And he always, with an open heart and such a loving man, he treated us not like council, but he treated us like we were family to him. But John, from the bottom of my heart, I will always treasure your friendship. You have been there for all of us. And especially, you gave me a couple years ago a devotional book, and I cherish that. Every day, I read my devotional. Thank you for being a man of faith, like Isabel and my colleague said. God bless you on your journey, and I will be right behind you. If you ever need us, give us a call. We're welcome to come over your house and have a barbecue. We won't break the brown act. But anyway, we love you and wish you nothing but the best. God bless you.
Okay. Well, what I have to say comes from my heart. You've been a very dear friend to Diane and I and to our family, and we'll always treasure our friendship. And thank you for exactly what the girls have said, the open-door policy. Because when we needed your advice, you didn't hesitate to help us. You didn't hesitate to say, yes, come on in. And, you know, you're gonna be missed, and you know what? God be with you, and fight on, huh? Fight on. Okay. Thank you. Now, Mr. Kavanoff, would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I'm truly moved by all this. I really didn't want to be doing this, but John Moreno, who's so persistent, as a city manager said, we're doing something, John. And so I said, okay, just kind of, you know, it's, let it be subtle. So I'm impressed. I'm so moved by all of you that are here. Former council members, former commissioners, former staff members. Oh, you're all here, and I remember all of you. And so, you know, one thing that the vice mayor said was interesting was 27 years ago, I did show up at the Chamber of Commerce because there was an opening for the City Attorney's Department. And so this lovely young lady came out and said, can I help you? And I said, yes, I'm interested in knowing more about the city. And so we talked back and forth, and the vice mayor was, at that time, I didn't know that she was on the council, and I started asking more and more questions until, as she said, she said, well, I am a sitting council member right now, so maybe we need to not have this conversation. Well, I got to tell you, my mouth dropped to the floor, bounced a few times, then came back up, and I said, oh, my gosh, did I just blow it in there? But little did I realize that that time, 27 years ago, was not just a job. It was an adventure. So let me tell you about Paramount, why Paramount is so successful. And you're probably thinking, well, John, how do you know Paramount's successful compared to other cities? Well, I'll tell you. Because as a municipal attorney, I helped incorporate probably six or seven cities in Southern California. I represented a number of cities as city attorney in California. But I've never, ever experienced a city like Paramount. Because in Paramount, the city council has something that most city councils do not have, and that is vision. And that vision never changed. 27 years ago, and I'm sure before then. But 27 years ago, when I came on, the city council had a vision of how to make the city of Paramount a better city. And today, that vision still stands. So it is amazing to see how, after all these years, it doesn't change when the council thinks about what's best for the city. When I first came on board, Pat West was the city manager. And Pat told me, John, our job is to carry out what the council wants. They have a vision. They have their policies. I don't want to hear you tell me we can't. I want you to tell me what we can do. Now, that's a pretty big task because it takes a lot more work to figure out how to make things work, doesn't it? It's so easy to say it can happen, or this is not good, or this is... It's a lot harder to say, well, how do we make it work? And so that was the philosophy that the council has had and continues to have, how to make the city of Paramount a better place to live. And I felt so honored to be part of a team. I've been blessed to work with fantastic city managers. Pat West, thank you so much for working with me. Linda Bedidenti-Liao was us, and now you have John Moreno. We are very fortunate to have these city managers because they really put together the vision, what the council wants, and we carry it out. One of the benefits of being a city attorney is that you really have really the privilege of working with all the departments in the city. All the departments. And you know what? That has just been a blessing to me because all these departments have made my job so much easier because they all work together. Because they all work together. And I'm so impressed with the department heads and how they carry out the vision of what the council is. And so, we all work together to do what is necessary. It's interesting because I guess the analogy that I wanted to make, and why I'm speaking from the heart, because I tried to write some notes down, and I said, forget it, I'm gonna speak from the heart. And it's that, this is really a family, a family of people that have such a desire to make this city as best as it can be. And they've succeeded. And all I can say is, I thank you for this time, but really, I want to thank you all. I want to thank you for allowing me to start.
Thank you, John. Before we have our presentations, there's one more special person that would like to say a few words, Jean Daniels.
27 years ago, when John applied for the job as a city attorney, we had five people who applied. The first four spoke, attorney just spoke, and I just, they didn't do anything for me. Just soon as John spoke, I said, there's the guy right there. And I said, I was Peggy and Diane, and I said, there's the guy right there. There's a guy you can go across the street and have a beer with. And I tell you, we had a good relationship for 27 years. So, I'm waiting for my commission for hiring. But anyway, I think we made a pretty good choice when we selected John, didn't you?
Thank you.
And one last comment I'd like to make, John, thank you for keeping us all out of jail.
Thank you, Jean. Now, we will present to you Mr. John Kavanoff.
Thank you so much.
And we have other presentations, John. Yes, get it front, John.
As you know, we've had a game a long time ago with council. When SC, we used to plummet UCLA pretty much every year. And so, I would bring jerseys to the council, and I would go through the score and say, well, as usual, I see one again. And I would give a jersey to each member of the council. So, I guess I'm getting paid back.
Payback.
Thank you so very much. I wear this with pride.
Pictures? Okay.
I just want, before I do, I just want to introduce my daughter. She's my pride and joy. Her name's Cassie London. Cassie is a singer-songwriter, and she has worked very hard. She's on break from touring in Europe. And so, she's got a new song coming out. I think most of the ladies will like the title of, but you're gonna have to wait before you hear. But she's been my inspiration a lot in this whole time. So, thank you, Cassie.
Now, let's see. Okay, everyone. Oh, we get a basket. Okay, this concludes our presentations for the evening. As always, thank you for making Paramount great. And at this time, we will call for a 15-minute recess. Thank you.
Could I have one more second for recess, please?
Oh, yes, 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 Reverend. We're ready to begin our council meeting. Those who are staying, please have a seat. We're ready to begin. Okay. Now, Mr. Moreno, are there any public comment updates from the last city council meeting?
Yes, indeed, there are, Madam Mayor. There is one, from the July 23rd, 2024 city council meeting. We do have a follow-up. The commenter was Mr. Michael Radus. And via email, he asked for the city to enforce the code as it pertains to a business that is currently operating the railroad tracks near the intersection of Vermont and Monroe Street. As a follow-up to that, on July 30th, public safety staff spoke with Mr. Radus and relayed to him that the city is aware of this issue, and that the business is actually proceeding with the unclassified use permit process, and that there is no final Department of Toxic Substance Control decision with regards to this issue. So that's what's needed before the final outcome is presented. He was informed that the city will monitor what happens at DTSE and follow up accordingly. And that's the report back from the July 23rd city council meeting. Madam Mayor, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, does any, council have any questions for Mr. Moreno? Not at this time. We will move on. Now is the time that members of the public may comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Mr. Moreno, are there any speaker cards for this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have several speaker cards, and then we have one written public comment that I'll have Ms. Luce read once we get through the in-person speakers cards. So our first speaker card is from Ms. Andrea Crowe from the Paramount Library. Andrea?
Hi, good evening, Mayor Delgadoio, Vice Mayor Lemmons, council members in the city of Paramount. We have two programs this week at Paramount Library, one for adults and one for children. On Wednesday at 2:00 PM, adults are invited to create a medallion made out of model magic. On Friday at 11:00 AM, children ages two to five are invited to Miss Jackie's Smarty Pants Storytime. I want to invite all the residents to come visit Paramount Library at 16254 Colorado Avenue. We're back, come check us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okeydoke. Our next speaker's comment is Mr. Alejandro Yanez, and he would like to address the council about Olympic sports. Mr. Yanez?
Good afternoon, councilwomen. I'd like to address council in trying to promote, I'm a big advocate for handball in the city of Paramount, as we feel that they were discriminately removed. Handball is a sport that started in Paramount before Paramount became a city. Mr. Kavanoff touched off on how long he'd been serving the city of Paramount, 27 years. Handball was around during all that time. Handball is a sport united our community. And just like the Olympics for the last two weeks, as many people were following, sports in general unite communities. And that's something that the city council doesn't want to understand. Boxing is a big sport, predominantly participated by a large Hispanic community. 95% of this community is Hispanic, and boxing is one of the biggest ones. The city council removed boxing, adult boxing. The city council removed men's adult soccer, the second largest sport. The city council removed men's adult softball, systematically discriminating against men in this city. There is no participation in sports in the city. As we gradually removed those sports from the city, the last sport we had was handball. And it was free. You didn't have to pay to join the league. Men that didn't have opportunities to have, show residency, maybe illegal, maybe not, had the opportunity to go and play handball and make friends, socialize, because that's what sport does. Sports unite communities. And that's what city council don't understand. I've never seen any five of you councilwomen at any point in my life, growing up here 51 years, come outside and play with us, at any point. So how could you relate to us? I keep this discriminating, disrespectful survey that was written about us, particularly using this survey to depict handball as drug dealers and gang members. And all the time that I've been coming here, personally, councilmember knows my family because one of them is the Parks and Recreation Commissioner, and he uses his position to abuse the position that he has against us. So we do not have handball. There has not been one handball issue at any park and any surrounding community. So what are we doing to address our issue, to bring handball back to our community? Because it was part of our community long before you, any one of you councilmembers, even became council. And you can keep ignoring me, but I'm gonna keep coming back, because it's disrespectful, Mr. Moreno, what you wrote about us, what you wrote about me in particular. You can't look at me because you know how disrespectful it is. It's disrespectful what you wrote about us, about me in particular. And I want you to know what's wrong. You wouldn't want me coming up here and disrespecting you, or disrespecting you out in your community. You don't live in this community. I do. I have to walk around and have to show my face and say, hey, you know what? I've never been a drug dealer. I've never been a gang member. But the city manager wrote this.
Your time is up.
Your time.
Our next speakers, Madam Mayor, the next two are actually related. They are addressing rent increases, rent stabilization ordinances. The first one is Ms. Brooke Irvin. Ms. Irvin?
Thank you. All right, I'm ready. Hello, my name is Brooke Irvin. I'm a statewide organizer with MH Action. Today, I'm here on behalf of the residents of Paramount and their concern of the rent increases in Paramount. For the last two weeks, MH Action organizers and members of MH Action went around door knocking to talk to residents about the rent increases and how it's impacting them. We also have folks sign a petition if they felt like a rent stabilization ordinance was needed in the city of Paramount. And to our surprise, we've gotten close to 100 signatures agreeing that something needs to be done about rent spikes. I come here today to see if we can get this on the agenda on the 27th or the next hearing, meeting, and bring residents here to make public comment around how a rent stabilization ordinance is needed in the city of Paramount, and so we can stop settling for short-term solutions. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker, Madam Mayor, to address this topic is Mr. Jose Sanchez of 15523 Lakewood Boulevard.
Hi, I wrote something. Hello, city councilmembers. I may look familiar because I came here with our local media early last year asking for your help in our dying situation. You may remember that our mobile home park was bought out by a new owner who had his own redevelopment plans for the property. After living in the same place for 15 years, my family, neighbors, and I were threatened with mass eviction and homelessness. We remain in place today at the mobile home park through temporary solutions, but we all know, sorry, but we all know that we need long-term solutions to fix the problem. Look around the streets, how many homeless people do you see? There are everywhere because of the failure to have laws in place to prevent these types of events. When I brought up rent stabilization last time, I was told that there wasn't enough interest in this, and that I needed, that it needed to be done through the state. I became part of my organization, MH Action, as a living example of the struggle that our residents deal with. We already made efforts through the state to help the situation, but as you already know, the state moves really slow in passing bills. We need solutions now, locally. Other surrounding cities have already acknowledged the need for such ordinances. For example, City of Belgrade has successfully enacted their ordinance, and have been very, they have seen very positive results, and such as a reduction in homelessness. I would like to ask all of you city councilmembers to put this topic on the agenda at our next community council meeting for further discussion, and to hear the stories of the residents who are affected. I would also like to request one-on-one meetings with each one of you to hear your opinions on the subject. I really hope that this does not fall on deaf ears. Local media outlets have been reaching out to me for an update on our living situation, because it's been about a year and a half since this situation happened, and nothing has been done about it so far. With that being said, I would also like to support Yasenia Cuarenta, who's gonna speak shortly about street safety in her block, which is San Jose. And I feel like, you know, that's also something that's very important because it's at the end of Paramount, like in the borderline of Compton. And if, you know, she got hit by a car, you know, like, she's an adult, imagine, like, if it would have been a kid or something. So I feel like that's, you know, like reason for concern, and I feel like you guys should hear her out. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, before we get to the next one, I'd just like to point out that Ms. Krasalchov, as our Assistant City Manager, will actually provide her contact information to Mr. Sanchez as well as Ms. Irvin, so that they can get back to her with that. Okay. Our next few speakers cards, Madam Mayor, are regarding a different topic, but all the same. So before actually we go into that, I'd like to just give a brief synopsis, because we have been working on this issue for the last couple of weeks. Initially, Ms. Cuarenta did reach out to staff about three weeks ago by email, and then staff traded information with her as well, by email and by phone. Then on July 30th, staff informed her that a full traffic analysis would be done, and that we informed her that it would take a couple of months. So about a week and a half later, on July 30th, she emailed staff again asking about a speed hump request from eight years ago. We are currently researching this. We also responded back with more details about the traffic analysis. We are gonna do the traffic analysis when school traffic returns to normalcy, because right now, parents are getting used to the schedule and dropping off kids. So that, the analysis on her block will be more accurate. So we informed her that the analysis would be done probably around the beginning of October. So the full-blown traffic analysis will be done around that time. So that's just a little bit of information, since we have been working on this issue. So our first of three speakers regarding this issue is Ms. Yasenia Cuarenta.
That's a violation of the brown act, Mr. Moreno. You're not allowed to make any discussion or speak during... Sorry. So hi, good afternoon. My name is Yasenia. I'm a resident of the city of Paramount, and I'd like to take a minute to educate Mr. Moreno. As a board member, I know that I'm not allowed to discuss or talk to anybody who comes up during a board meeting, so I think you should do the same too, Mr. Moreno.
Excuse me, Ms. Yasenia, please focus on your topic. Thank you.
Thank you. You are not to argue with the city manager.
Oh, I'm just making a fact.
No, no, no. We don't need to hear facts. We need to hear you.
Okay, so I wanted to share, thank you. So I wanted to correct, Mr. Moreno, maybe I should file, reach out to the district attorney's office, just like they threatened me, then I'll have to email the district attorney's office.
No, we don't need this right now, Ms. Cuarenta, thank you.
So I wanted to share with you my experience. So I grew up here in Paramount, and on June 13th, 2024, I was exiting my house, going to my classroom, and I was struck by a vehicle that, a reckless driver. She was speeding and on her phone, and so I'm here to share that I'm not the only one on that street who's had an experience, and I'm here to advocate, not just on my behalf, but on behalf of my neighbors and the children that, hundreds of children that walked through that street. And I know, Mr. Moreno, I have been in contact with the city, that is true, but I know that previous, or residents from that city had previously contacted the city and had tried to do something years ago. I don't know what happened, I don't have that proof with me, but I am working on getting that. So I'm here today to ask the city to please, you know, I get it, it's a process, I understand, but, you know, we need to do, it shouldn't have taken this long. It shouldn't have taken the city this long. God, I could have died, one of the kids that lived next to me could get hit, and, you know, I just, I know I'm not the only one on that street that's concerned, so I want to thank the council for listening. I also wanted to ask fellow councilmembers here, you know, I think my example of the fact that my neighborhood has, you know, we've been waiting for eight years for our street to be safe, it really shows that our all neighborhoods should be empowered, right? And one way, Mr. Moreno and council, that we can empower neighborhoods is by drawing districts, just like we did on the school board. Our city should do the same, Ms. Lemmons, Ms. Delgado, Ms. Olmos, Ms. Cuellar Stallings, Ms. Aguayo, draw districts. So I'm here requesting that for the next city council agenda, that you add the discussion item of districts, adding districts to the city, so that residents like me, you know, don't have to wait years and years for good change to come to our neighborhoods. So I will be back at the next meeting, and I want to see that discussion item on the agenda, drawing districts for the city of Paramount. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Madam Mayor, about this topic is Ms. Brenda Dahit. I'm sorry, I hope I didn't mispronounce your name, sorry. Daharad, thank you.
Hi, my name is Brenda, and I am Yasenia's neighbor. I have witnessed multiple collisions on San Diego, San Jose. I am a mother of three children with special needs, and I've been teaching my children to be responsible, and one of them is to take the trash out to the street. And after witnessing how my street is unsafe, I am concerned for my childrens that might get hurt, and my, they have to do it on their own, you know?
I'm thinking Ms. Marquez may need an interpreter? Yep, okay, here we go.
Buenas tardes. Yo vengo porque en noviembre seis, este, le chocaron a mi espalda y tirado, y la policía nunca llegó. Le llevaron al nueve once y tampoco nunca llegó. Entonces, ¿qué estamos seguros? ¿No estamos seguros? Yo tengo 15 años viviendo aquí y nunca me ha pasado eso. Mi esposo ya no puede caminar, me lo dejaron enfermo, y nadie me puede ayudar, porque siempre ignoran a uno. Yo siempre he dicho, porque vivimos en la orilla de Paramount, nos ignoran, porque yo he visto como si para acá, donde está más seguro, pero para allá, porque estamos en la orilla, no ignoran. El policía tampoco, hasta las cuatro horas llegó y no quiso hacer nada. Y el nueve once tampoco nunca llegó, y lo dejaron inconsciente. ¿Qué hacer? Eso no está bien. Mi esposo ya no camina, yo tuve que dejar de trabajar, y ya nada más, yo trabajaba. El sostén es muy pesado, y no pueden ayudar a uno, pues no.
Good evening, I'm coming because on November 6, someone crashed into my husband, someone, a drug addict or something, they were high on alcohol, and they just left them there. The police didn't come, called 911, they didn't come. So how are we even safe? We're not safe at all. And I've been living here for 15 years, and my husband can't walk anymore, and they left him unwell, and we didn't get any help. We always get ignored, and I'm not sure if that's because we live at the edge or at the limit of Paramount. Here, around here, it's safe, but I feel like we're ignored at the outskirts of Paramount. And the police, they didn't come until four hours later, they didn't want to do anything, 911 didn't come, and he was just there, left unconscious, unconscious, incontinent. And, you know, I ended up having to stop working, and I was the only one working, I was the only, only one bringing in the income, and I didn't get any help, so.
Espero que pongan atención, que los policías hagan algo, porque ignoran a uno, también los policías.
And that's all, I hope that you all pay attention to this and that police do something about this, because they just ignore us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, we will have the lieutenant look into that particular call, because it sounds like that's a specific incident related to that.
We will, yes.
Okay, before we move on to our next speaker cards, we do have two that were turned in after the public comment period began, and the rules of decorum do say that the speaker cards have to be in before the public comment period begins, but it's up to the mayor if you would like to allow these two that came in, and we'll gladly read them off.
Yes, please read.
Okay, very good. The first of the two that came in after the public speaking is Earl, and Mr. Earl just did not want to speak, but he did want us to read it into the record. He says, "I am starting to recall the council." And then the other public comment is from Mr. JP Drayer, and he'd like to discuss to the council about neighborhood districts. Mr. Drayer?
Hi, I'm John Paul Drayer, JP Drayer. My maternal great-grandparents moved to Paramount in the 60s, and I would come to visit them on Downey Avenue and Orozaba. And the Orozaba is like around the corner from our restaurant building on Rosecrans, where my great-grandmother Amanda made her kitchen into a community bakery, and she made so many wonderful sugar cookies and other things, but I love the sugar cookies. So I have really great fond memories on Orozaba and our businesses as I surround the corner, the Caramucho Restaurant Building on Rosecrans. And I have businesses in other towns, and one of my businesses was in the most underdeveloped and crime-ribbon part of my hometown next door to Paramount. And because I won district elections with a long, multi-year fight, we now have a council member to defend the rights of the poorest, most racially diverse neighborhood in Bellflower bordering Paramount. And now, we are able to have, work on our safe passages to school, to a Paramount Unified School District School, Collins. I was, because of my influence and gaining this, and also I petitioned the Paramount Unified School District and asked for district elections following our win in Bellflower, and that was so granted, and I thank the school board for granting that, so smaller communities can have at least one school board seat. And so we can be empowered, and we're working with the city to make it safer for the children to go to Collins or to Mokler from Bellflower. Every neighborhood needs empowerment. I walked through a very wealthy neighborhood in Paramount, and there was a traffic circle. And one of the things, I looked up for traffic calming is traffic circles. My friends are traffic engineers. Poor neighborhoods need the same consideration for rich neighborhoods in Paramount for traffic circles or whatever a traffic study says would prevent accidents like what happened to people in the neighborhood that have been discussing this earlier. We need safer neighborhoods and safer empowerment, and geographic representation of school boards should represent certain schools or passageways to school, and also certain neighborhoods for the city would give more attention to neighborhoods and empower them equally. For the neighborhoods that have historically had, a lot of councilmembers, they have traffic calming measures, but not in this neighborhood near Compton. We used to own a triplex on Orange, and I saw the difference in other neighborhoods we had properties here in Paramount. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have one more oral speaker's card, but it's on an item that's on consent, so if you don't mind, I'd like to go over to the written public comment, and then we'll get to the one item.
I don't mind, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Good evening, Paramount City Council and staff. I am once again addressing the council to ask you, to ask that you compel the city manager's office and city staff to enforce appropriately per the municipal code as it pertains to the illegal hazardous waste facility operating in the dirt parcels near the intersection of Vermont and Monroe, too close to homes, hospitals, and schools in violation of the law. Please stop protecting bad business in the community and enforce as per the code and your directives for the benefit, peace, and health of my neighbors and the community at large. Thank you, my greatest.
Okay, and our last in-person speaker's card, it happens to be on item number nine, which is on the consent calendar, so we'll now call it Ms. Sofia Partita.
Hello, hello, good evening, City Council. I'm a resident of Bellflower, but we just had this same item on our consent calendar last night, and I just wanted to urge the city council to vote no on the item. It's regarding cemetery districts, I didn't know what that was until just yesterday, but essentially, the Downey Cemetery District is trying to incorporate Paramount and Southgate into its district, and as we all know, the Downey Cemetery is like this big, no more plot space, they have space for cremations, but essentially, I'm urging you all to vote no, because I think that we should ask the redistrict, I think we should ask for the map to be redrawn out, and for the cities that are involved in this mapping to send representation to the people who are drawing out the map, so that they're not just making random borders without thinking about who is affected, who gets to have potential, like, you know, graves and in the cemeteries. Yeah, I just, like I said, I just learned about this yesterday, and I think it's important for cities to have a voice in how the maps are drawn out, instead of just having the item brought to their council meetings. So I do think that there should be some sort of either citizen representation or a council member representation within these border plannings for the cemetery district. But yeah, I believe that's all I wanted to bring to your attention, because, yeah, I know Bellflower voted no, so I do think that the map should be drawn out again with the full consideration of the constituents and how it will affect the people in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment, Madam Mayor.
Okay, next, oh, go ahead, any questions?
A question and a comment. So my question, John, is for the speed hump issue that's on San Jose, correct? The reason that we're doing the traffic study is to determine whether or not speed humps are the best option, or something like a traffic circle calming, or other types of infrastructure that might be more valid for the area. We want to make the best possible choice, because my understanding is it's near a school and that there's also lots of driveways on that particular street, which I know I couldn't get speed humps on my street because the driveways were too close when I requested them, so we're looking at possible alternatives. Am I clear on that? That's the reason for the study, so that we can get the best possible alternative for that neighborhood?
You're absolutely correct.
Okay. And then I'd just like to make a comment, when it talks about neighborhoods underrepresentation and investment, no neighborhood in the city of Paramount has had more financial investment in the millions of dollars than the sand streets have over the last 20 years. And I know because I championed the biggest part of that, and because I live closest to the sand streets. So to implicate that because if they're far into the city, they're forgotten, is just a misstatement and does not back up by the facts. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just want to, I have a comment, John, can you clarify something for me, because I also looked at the Bellflower Council meeting last night? They did not say no, they tabled it due to the fact that Bellflower's total city was not incorporated into one map out.
You're absolutely correct.
So it was not denied, it was just tabled until they figure out the mapping.
That is correct, and they're going back to the drawing board, and they're coming back to the Bellflower Council meeting, likely at the next month's meeting.
Okay. And can I just make one more comment, and I'm sorry to, you know, about this districting that's been coming up and stuff, you know? This is an at-large city, anybody can run, anybody can pull papers and run to represent this community. So when we talk about districting and being represented here or there, again, we get elected by the people, by the whole community is who elects us. So I just want to make that very clear, you know, again, we've had these discussions about districts, I know that it comes up, and yeah, the school district did it, and it was great, because the school district is way bigger than the city is. Absolutely, you know, so, again, and we have always said this, as a council, if you are looking to run, if you are interested in representing your residents, pull papers and run, and the residents will elect you if they want you sitting up here. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for that.
Thank you, Ms. Councilmember. Any more comments, council?
I'm totally agree with the council and their president. You want to represent your community, city of Paramount, pull papers and run for city council.
Okay, thank you. Now we move on. Next, we'll move on to the consent calendar, is there a motion for the consent calendar?
There's a motion.
Okay. City Clerk, can we please have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuellar Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
Mayor Delgado?
Yes. Okay, we go to old business, and tonight we'll start with an item of old business, consideration of an amendment to renew the agreement with Care Solus Incorporated. Mr. City Manager, may we have a report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as you know, we've been using the services of what's called Care Solus. This is an app that residents use to seek referrals to mental health clinicians, kind of operates like a concierge service, and it's free to residents. The funding comes from World Energy Community Benefits Agreement. So as a recap, we provided council with a written report in roughly late April, early May, in your weekly memo, then during the May budget presentation, we included our intention to renew our contract with Care Solus. As part of the adopted budget in June, we presented an agreement in July to continue the service. Council asked for a more in-depth presentation, so that's what we're going to hear tonight about the service and a progress report on the usage by Paramount residents. So with us here tonight is Ms. Anita Ward, she's the Chief Growth Officer for Care Solus, and she will be giving us a presentation. Then our Public Safety Director Maggie Mattson will then wrap up the presentation with our recommendation for tonight. Hi, Anita.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, thank you, City Manager Moreno. I really appreciate the opportunity to present to you a little more detail around what we're doing with the city. We had a six-month pilot, and what I'd like to do tonight is hit on some of the highlights that we had in this six-month pilot, and then maybe dive a little bit deeper into some of the data. Please feel free to stop me at any point, because I'm going to go through a lot of data, some of the insights, but I want to make sure that I've answered all of your questions as well. So by way of reminder and a little bit more explanation for what we do, we connect all of the residents of Paramount to both social services as well as to mental health providers in the city. So with a phone call, with the use of a QR code, or simply by accessing a website or an app, any resident in the city can call one of our care companions, or can even search on their own and access mental health care. They can put in a language, they can search based on ethnicity, they can search based on specialty, they can search based on proximity to their zip code. So we have a number of filters, they can even search on availability. So we know and have this ability to handle them and get them into care. The way that we rolled it out was by working for the six months for the pilot, we worked very closely with the comms team. So we have the QR code all over the city, we have it on business cards, when first responders feel like somebody doesn't warrant a 5150, but they know that they probably need some care at some point, they'll leave behind a card, explain- care at some point, they'll leave behind a card explaining to the resident that it's free of charge, and that they can call or use this QR code to access Care Solis at any point. So we kind of knit together, if you will, all of these services within a city. We have a provider network in California alone of over 100,000 providers, so if there aren't providers locally here in LA County or within your geography, we can reach out. We've got the largest ecosystem of mental health providers in the country, so we know that at any point we can get somebody into care. Our results, I think, for the first six months are fairly compelling, and I do a lot of cities around the country, so kudos to your comms team. You even have QR codes in public restrooms on the backs of doors, so I think you're actually getting the messaging out quite quickly. We've helped 112, 112, I'm so sorry, it's late, and I'm actually quite emotional, because your city council meeting was amazing with the retirement. So we've helped 1,112 service requests. So over 1,000 people have used the service in six months, and I'm going to show you a moment, in a moment, how that has grown. On behalf of them, we have done about 7,200 communications, so talking to providers, navigating on behalf of the resident, talking to the resident, trying to build trust, getting them into care. And then we're matching them to care in a little under two days, so 1.73 days on average, and getting them into an appointment in about seven days. Most of this work, 55% of it, the service requests are coming from zip code 90723, and I can dive deeper in on the zip codes as well. We like to track that, so that you can start to think about, as a city council, where are the requests coming from. My dream ultimately is you take the data, and maybe one day we all inform policy together as we start to dive deeper into data, but I tend to be an idealist in that world. Let's look a little bit at the service requests and what they look like, and you'll see over time, what's happened is, is it's increased. So organically and with the help of the city, as your departments got used to telling people about it, as people got used to seeing the QR code in places, it has grown over time. And you'll see this big jump in July. I was talking to Maggie about it. We also support the school district, and my assumption is, I've got to look a little bit more, my assumption is in July, maybe some of the people who typically use the school district are out of the school district and may have turned to the city, so you may be filling a gap, even for the young people who didn't have access to those services through the school district in July. The lighter blue represents the service request itself, represents the individual. I like to then look at it from the perspective of, are they just using the QR code, or are they using the phone number? So I want to drill down into that data, so again, I know exactly where it's coming from, so I can start to look at some trend lines and determine what we should be doing in terms of communication and how we can get more communication out. I said we also do social services. I wanted to look at all of the social service requests that we've had, all of the people who came to our care companions for help in getting matched to social services, all of them needed help with food. So every person who said, "I need social services help, please match me," they had a food insecurity. 75% of those who asked us for social services help needed, had a housing insecurity, and 25% had an additional medical insecurity that went beyond mental health. That could have been dental, it could have been an additional medical insecurity, and so we matched them with services there as well. I also put this in, and I'm happy to go through this with you as well, but I like to track for you the time to match and the time to appoint over the six months, so that we can see, are there spikes, what's happening, and then what's happening in the data. And I'll just point out a couple of them, but in June, when you see the higher level of the time to appoint, in that case, we had a number of cases where we needed to find beds for people. And so that extended the average time to appoint, because it takes a little bit longer to find availability of beds, whether that's a rehab or an inpatient, so it takes slightly longer, so it extended our average time to appoint in June. So, but on average, as I said, we're matching people in about a day and a half, and getting them into appointments on average in seven days. Most of the requests are coming from the city, as I said, through these cards. What we would do, if we're fortunate enough to continue to work with you, is we would train more of the departments and get more information out. We do have some requests from the homeless team, but I haven't been able to really drill down, and I can work with the city manager's office and with the public safety office to really drill down more around where are all these referrals coming from in the city, and what does that, you know, look like more broadly? We can train and retrain, but it's really quite exciting to have been able to help 1,100 people. I'd like to share with you some of the demographics that we're seeing, and I put in the school district too, so that, I think more broadly, as the city, you should have some visibility into it. You'll see quite quickly that the population that we did servicing for in those 1,100 fall primarily into adults, 26 to 59, and then about a quarter of them, 20% of them, I apologize, are young adults, where the school district itself is helping predominantly children. They also help families of the school district, so you'll get a little bit of overlap between Paramount residents that, as I said earlier, why I think we have a spike in July, but some Paramount residents, it might be helped through the school district, and then some that might be helped through the city. But sure, our target in the city is adults, and we're very much hitting that target. I also looked at the data through gender and ethnicity lens. It's predominantly women, 58% of women are initiating a service request. Now, they could be initiating it on behalf of a loved one, so you'll see when you go through a care match with us, but they are initiated by women, so almost 60% of them are initiated by women. Now, this actually is quite typical across all of our cities, so it's not unusual. Actually, only have one city in California, Montebello, where it's a higher population of males that initiate the service requests. It's really quite interesting, and I really don't have an answer as a scientist for why that's the question, but I promise the Montebello City Council are going to figure out why. But, so typically, it is males that are, or females that are initiating it. In terms of ethnicity for the 1,100 population, 62% of that are, is, the ethnicity is white, but I believe that over time, as we build trust, we're going to tap into more of the Hispanic, African-American, and Asian populations. You'll see that the languages of services, our care companions speak 200 languages, and we will translate all of our materials into any language you want. So, but right now, of our requests from those 1,100, 20% of them have been requested in Spanish, and the rest have requested English for care. So, but we can accommodate any sets of languages that you want. I am actually most proud of this slide, and it's a busy slide. We can, I'm not going to drill into all the different insurance companies that we support, but what I'm most happy about on this slide is the blue bars, because if you add together the private insurance, I mean, the public insurance and no insurance, 57.2% of the people we're helping are using no insurance or public insurance. I look at that as a proxy for income, and I think we're helping some of the most vulnerable populations in the community, because we don't, it doesn't matter to us whether you have insurance, we'll manage through, we find providers that manage through sliding scale, that manage through public insurance, that provide pro bono help as well. So we're helping the most vulnerable, and for me, this is, it's quite compelling to see numbers that strong. I also, and again, these are the highlights, I'm happy to provide more, but in the interest of time and being respectful of the allotted time today, I thought I'd just quickly look at, here are some of the mental health treatment types that, that the 1,100 represent. About half of them are for, looking for individual therapy. About 35% of that specifically asked for teletherapy, but that tended to be a younger population, so it tended to be more the 18 to 25-year-old that was looking for teletherapy. And then 26% of this was a much more intensive pathway, where they may have required an intervention, or may have required a bed, or may have required rehab. So about a quarter of what we're looking at is these more difficult ones. And of those that fell into the substance abuse categories, 13% of those were alcohol-related, and about 3% of those were cannabis-related. Again, data that I want to share, just so, as you, if we go further along and we manage this along longitudinal perspectives, we can maybe even find patterns and address patterns. I then pulled where the categories of mental health, the top-level categories of mental health that we saw in the city of Paramount, but I also wanted to use LA County, we do a lot of work in the county, so that at least you had a control group and some baseline, so that we could decide, should we be alarmed by any one of these numbers, and what are they meaningful? The only one that I would point out, for most part, actually, city of Paramount looks a whole lot, looks a little bit better than LA County in general, so, you know, kudos to the culture, and maybe some of what we saw earlier here in terms of, what did you call, the Paramount Way and doing whatever it takes for residents? I think it's representing a bit of itself in what we see in the numbers here, they're stronger than I see a lot of times. The one thing I would call out, and it's not statistically significant, but you'll see in a moment why I want to call it out, is when you compare it to LA County, the suicidal ideation and self-harm is about two points higher in the city of Paramount than it is in LA County in general. But what I did was dive deeper on the data in terms of ethnicity, and if you drop way down to the African-American piece, in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see that of the African-American service requests that we had, 45% of those had self-harm or suicidal ideation. So September is Suicide Awareness Month. We'll do a lot of messaging around this, we'll target churches, we'll target community centers. We can really work closely with you on how do we get a message out around trust and suicide awareness, and really work through, and that's how we use the data to start to inform messaging to help get people into care. And then across the board, I just thought I'd pull out some ethnicity statistics for you, because the ways that we build trust and the ways that we look at this, we look at trauma and stress across these populations, it starts to, again, build our messaging, build the way we go to market, build how we get people engaged in the process. And then also just for tonight, I thought I would also look a little bit at age, and take it across, generationally across, and interestingly, there were no baby boomers that used us yet. So maybe we need to outreach to some of the senior centers, or start working with some of the church groups and see if we can't get our information out to the boomer population also. But I started to look at categories by age, and saw anxiety levels among millennials are incredibly high, as they are with trauma and stress and suicidal ideation. So starting to think about, how do we speak to the millennial population, how do we start making sure that we're helping there in that? And then when I look at Alpha and Gen Z, see depression is 52%, those are national numbers. So you are tracking with national numbers. It's a tragedy what's happening, and the Surgeon General and his recent issues around, his recent publication around loneliness among this generation, and what it has done to them, particularly with depression and self-harm, is so compelling. But I want to leave you with something, so I said that, you know, the first part of your council meeting, in some ways, brought me to tears, because I was one of those kids, my family was unhoused. My parents never found their footing ever. I lived in at least 18 cities, and I can't count the schools, I can't even tell you how many schools we attended. There were four kids and my parents. My dad struggled with alcohol abuse, he was a veteran, came back, just couldn't figure out life. My mom was an immigrant, she was Italian, she was young bride, she struggled with depression, anxiety, would be in and out of hospitals. I don't, I can't point to 123 Main Street, so I have this lovely envy of everybody in Paramount who can say, "I live on this street, and I have a home on this street." And my biggest reminder was, my dad threw us all into a U-Haul, and from Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, drove across the country and parked at a rest stop in Las Vegas, because it had bathrooms. And that was the first time I had any sense of permanence. And it was the first time that my parents understood what a city could do. And I don't know why, I don't know why it was Las Vegas, I can't answer it, except that I walked across the desert at 15 years old and got a job at McDonald's, and I had dignity for the first time, I had food to take home to the U-Haul. My mom found a job, but we also began to understand that cities have an infrastructure designed to help people like us. But we had been through 21 cities up until then, or 22 cities, where we couldn't navigate it, we couldn't figure it out. So I, one, want to commend you for your leadership. You really did have me crying with the retirement of your city attorney and the love that was shared, but also what you're doing and what Paramount has in that Paramount Way is truly what every city should have and what my family missed out on. And this, and the reason I'm so excited about working with you these last six months is because connecting those dots is helping all the Anitas that you don't even know are out there, that are living in cars or living in U-Hauls, or whose parents are struggling with these situations. So I know I'm supposed to turn it over, Maggie, I hope I did not go over time, but I want to thank you very much for your leadership. There's so much more data that I'm happy to share with the city manager, but I wanted to hit some of the highlights, and I wanted to express my gratitude for working with us for the last six months, so. Shall I turn it to you? I answer any questions to you, I apologize.
Any questions, Council? Any questions?
I do, Madam Mayor, but I, do you want Maggie to go? And then, yeah.
Maggie? Okay, we'll go to Maggie.
Maggie, thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
Thank you, Anita. And good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I'm just going to quickly go over the fiscal impact. So for Paramount residents, we know that if they do utilize any service through Care Solis, there's not going to be any monetary fees. The city would pay a flat fee of $1.50 per resident annually, and the total cost of the agreement would not exceed $80,250. As mentioned earlier, funding for this program was included in the fiscal year 2024-25 under the Community Preservation Division budget, and this is through the World Energy slash Alt-Air Community Benefits Agreement Fund. So that is the funding, and again, I do want to give you the time, so you can ask all the questions for Anita, because I know she can dive into the statistics that were presented tonight, so Anita, I'll hand it over to you.
Hi, Anita.
Hi.
Thank you for the presentation. I just have one clarification, and maybe this will just solve everything.
Okay.
So with Care Solis, you guys are just not in a mental health referral system, because what I saw in the statistics, you guys actually provide food and housing.
Yes, that's right.
So the 1,122 people that have reached out for you for services, it's not all mental health, it's either food services or housing.
Or both. In many, in most cases, actually.
Okay.
It's both. So our care companions, when somebody calls for help.
Yeah.
They may, what they're doing right away is they're talking to them about, maybe they need a therapist, so they're doing the assessment.
Sure.
And in the process, they're determining, is there another insecurity? So most of the time, there is something else that's underlying, or the mental health piece is part of all the other social determinants of health that they need help with, so it could be, it could be both.
Because looking at your stats, though, the food was the highest tier.
Yeah, that's a subset of those, yes, food insecurities are the largest ones.
So I mean, I'm just like, so our Paramount residents are in need of...
Of food and housing.
Housing.
Housing, yes.
I mean, that's what I got from that presentation.
That's right. And so, but I'm also thinking, I was telling Maggie at the break, that even the woman who presented about the children's organization, I should remember her name, but I need to make sure that my care companions are aware of all these, including food banks, including all of these, including the pastor, like, we should have all of these, so that I can send people to culturally relevant locations, but also, so I know when there's a food insecurity, who do I get to, what food banks do I get to, what churches are offering free food, what's happening in the city, so, yeah, food insecurities are pretty high.
That's on your question, because now you've raised curiosity in me. So if the majority of the calls were what Councilmember Olmos noticed about food and and housing, did the call initiate because of mental health and stress or did it initiate?
Actually, let me clarify. So maybe my statistic, I didn't mean for it to be misleading. A portion of the mental health calls were for food. About 10% of the 1,000, so about 100 people, also had an insecurity for food. I'm sorry to mislead you. I talked way too fast. So 1,100, about 100 of those had a mental health condition that also required food. So it was about 100 of the, 10% of them had a food insecurity, but every one of those who had any kind of social services need, the social services need was food. So when the care companion is saying, determining that they need a social service, every single one of them needed food, but not all 1,100 needed food.
I'm sorry, that's still, that's still an answer to my question, at least the way it's formed in my head, which is when they called you, though, because I understand that through the process, we determine what they needed. But when they called you, did they call you over a mental health service issue?
Yes, they called for a mental health.
And then you found out this is a substantive service they need to help with?
That's correct.
What they're going through. But they called because they were experiencing...
A mental health crisis.
Issue.
Yes.
So then that grass, so mental health is the actual initial call? And then those three buckets are initial services?
That's correct.
Whether it be healthcare, housing, or food?
Because I'm thinking, the way I'm looking at it, explain to me if I'm missing this because she's our local expert, is that if you, if they called over mental health, so they're calling because, yes, I have anxiety and depression because I can't feed my kids.
Yes.
So they're calling because they're feeling that mental stress?
That's correct.
And this is one of the things that can solve it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so they have correlated.
Sure. Yeah, that's what it's looking like. Yeah, it was like high numbers for me.
Yes. Question?
Okay, where do you refer these patients if they need food and they need housing? So do you refer them to public services or do you...
Yes, so I should have that in front of me, but when we launched, when we launched with the City of Paramount, we pulled together a list from you of all the providers in the city, community-based organizations, government organizations, social services. We load that into, and I don't have it in front of me, I'm happy to provide that to you. And then we continue to update it as we go. So we got the initial list from you at launch, from the city at launch, to make sure we had, we represented all of your existing infrastructure. Then we add that to our providers and then we continue to add, which is why I said about the woman today with the children's piece, I need to make sure that we have everybody in and that we continue to add to it. So we started with a list from you on who should we be sending this to first and then continue to add to that on top of it.
Okay, and then I have another question. Then do you refer them like to Emmanuel Church? They have a food bank. Do you refer them to specific churches? Because Pastor Grady, he also likes to support families. If there's a family in need, he's always opened his door. If they need food, if they need clothing, am I correct, Dr. Timmons?
And council member, I don't know for sure that we do. Typically, we refer to churches whether or not I specifically have them in there. I will go back and pull the list of everybody who's in there, but we often, in every city, there's churches who do the same thing. And then, and food banks, but in addition, all these community-based organizations typically are in the database. But I don't have the list in front of me. I'm so sorry, I should have brought it with me of what's in there for Paramount.
I think we did provide it, Velma, when we had our initial meeting because Brenda and I met, because it started as part of the homeless care situation. So we started giving them those names right then. So I do believe, it wouldn't hurt to double check, but I believe we provided them all of those.
Yes, okay. May I have, John, do you have that list? I would love, I would love to see that.
We could get it from there and then we will provide it to you in your weekly memo.
And let's continue, I mean, if we move forward, let's just make sure we continue to update it all the time. And any events that you have, we like to attend events, the community events, and then we can continue to add to it. But I did make a point to introduce myself to the pastor when he was here, so.
Yes, and then there's other organizations like Arlie the Rosary. I could just go down the list because I've always referred a lot of my neighbors to these different churches and organizations. So I would like to be tremendous help. Anyway, Brenda and Peggy are on top of it, everything, so.
I would love that very much because, I mean, I'm a little embarrassed I shared my story because I don't usually share my story, but you guys moved me. But the only people who helped us were churches. So first and foremost, they're on my mind typically when I load a city because I know how that helps. So I would be very surprised if we don't have them in Paramount's data.
One last comment. Just let me say to you, thank you so much for sharing your story because it certainly inspires us to do better.
Oh, it does, yes.
You guys are doing pretty great. I told Maggie you set a bar pretty high for the other cities, so it's great to be here today. The Paramount Way.
Yeah, we do.
Thank you for your time, Anita. I appreciate it.
This Paramount Way is being used every way.
But that's why we are Paramount.
Any other comments, Council?
Actually, let me, so I know that it's something that I had shared with the city manager not long ago. So in all of the chaos of, you know, just the Isabel world, I actually called Carisolus a while back ago and they were on it. So I know the question...
I was holding my breath.
No, so I just, so I really, you know, again, and I think that's what makes us, you know, human and approachable to our communities, you know, a lot of the personal stories. So I do appreciate it. So I did, you know, for, you know, various reasons, but they are definitely on top of it, you know, they, you know, and then, you know, I mean, I got all the services you needed. I did, and I was like, wow, because I had no idea that, you know, it was all of this other stuff. And it was very personal is the thing. It went from, you know, I think it was like initial email or something, and then it was this constant communication where then it wasn't just email, it was actually a phone call, a text message, because to me, it was easier text message. So again, you know, I think it's something that is important to share and hear, you know, because again, I hadn't shared this with my colleagues, I actually just shared it with our city manager not that long ago and I really did. But thank you, the statistics that we got, I think it's kind of what we were looking for as well, just to say like, okay, well, you know, what is going on in our city with this program? So thank you.
Well, I'm glad we could help you. So thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, can we call for a motion, please?
I will make a motion.
I second.
Okay, city clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Guayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Of course.
Vice Mayor Lemons?
Yes.
Mayor Delgado.
Yes, thank you. Now, our first item of new business is an oral report on the 2024 Homeless Census. Mr. City Manager, may we have a report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. As you know, each year, we conduct a homeless census. We've been doing this for the last three years. We hire a consultant to canvass our city and engage and interview individuals who are homeless that they find. This information is much more in-depth than the county's annual count, and by having much more in-depth profile of our homeless and the neighbors, we know how to direct our resources to those, to where it's needed most. This presentation was given to the City Council Homeless Subcommittee. They heard this presentation on Friday. So with us tonight is Mr. Matt Bates. He is the Executive Vice President of CityNet. Matt?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Thanks for having me tonight. As stated, I'm here to present on the 2024 Homeless Count or Homeless Census that we did for your city, but also because we did a similar census in 2022 and 2023, I've got some comparison data for you to look at over those three, those three years. Now, we did, in addition to the previous presentation that we made on Friday, we also submitted a full report of the data, of the census findings to your staff and to you. What I'm doing tonight, or what I intend to do, is just to kind of do an overview and illuminate some of the highlights as I see them. But as I said, you've got, you've got a copy of the full report. So with that, I hit the wrong word, the wrong way. Our organization, we're a nonprofit organization. We are a homeless services agency that provides services kind of across the spectrum, everything from street outreach and engagement to shelter management to housing. But one of the things that we have done over time is these censuses. We work in over 40 cities and seven counties across the state. We've got, like I said, a large footprint and we've done these censuses for multiple cities, including, like I said, your city three times, but also we are the contracted agency for the Orange County Point in Time Count. So we're familiar with the Point in Time Count as a different entity from these citywide censuses, and those are for all 34 cities in the county of Orange. And we're contracted to do that count again in 2026 for the county of Orange. The goal of the census, why do we do it? We do it because we want to identify a baseline number of people that are living without housing in your city. And then also, that will help us to determine a statistical baseline to measure intervention efforts against over time, and then also to determine the demographics and other characteristics of the homeless neighbors. Because this is a survey-based count, it's a census, we attempt to interview everybody that we come across and we ask them questions so we can gather that demographic and other data. We did this in this year in the early morning of May 28th, and then we went out in the late evening of May 30th. And so over that time, we partnered with city staff, with law enforcement. Before those dates, we had mapped out the city, identified hotspots of locations where we expected to find homeless neighbors. And then we canvassed those maps, both in the early morning. And the goal was to have the team go out for two hours, canvass their maps, take a break, and then go out and re-canvass those same maps in the early morning. And then the same, same thing, late evening on the 30th. And so the high-density maps, we went back to on four different occasions. Because this was a survey-based count, we captured demographic and identifiable information and so we could use that for deduplication of the data. So taking a look at the 2024 census, the overall number that we identified was 43 individuals. That's, like I said, one of the, one of the primary objectives is to identify what is your reality that you're dealing with and on that day or in those days, that's, that's the number of individuals that we encountered. I'll speak a little bit more about that when I place that number in context. We used GIS technology on phones. All the, all the surveys were done through the phone technology and that allowed us to drop a PIN down at each location that we conducted the survey. And this is, we find that this is useful to share with you in general. We find that cities, cities are pretty aware of where homeless neighbors are gathering and where there's encampments, if there are large encampments, but this gives a sense of the geographic spread across the city. Every homeless individual is unique and their story is unique and the services that are required to end their experience of homelessness are unique to those individuals. But that said, we do try to come up with a statistical composite just based on the most common and the most frequent answers to the questions that we ask. And so viewed as a composite of the highest frequency responses here in the city, the typical unsheltered homeless individual identifies as a Hispanic or Latino male between the ages of 45 and 54 who sleeps in Paramount and is chronically homeless. Chronically homeless is a pretty technical definition that comes from HUD, but it essentially means people that have been experiencing homelessness for a significant length of time and typically have significant barriers towards ending their homelessness and they need assistance and connection to services to make that happen for them. We did some community ties. We've done this for the past, for each of the censuses that we've done for your city. This is a series of questions that we've asked, and again, those are all, the responses to every single question are listed in the full report. But what we're trying to do is to identify how people are tied to this city. There is no national definition of community ties that comes from HUD or any other source that would say, here's, here's who counts as your homeless neighbors and here's who counts as the homeless neighbors of the city next door. Because by definition, to be homeless is to lack a fixed permanent address. There are a number of ways to kind of get at this. And so what we're trying to do here with this series of questions is just to illuminate the question so that you can come to an understanding of who's in your city and how they're tied to you. So you can see some of the, some of the different questions that we asked about last permanent residents, where people became homeless, where they usually sleep, where they stayed during the day, and we even asked about where they went to school and what city that was in. This is a, an important slide to me and I think one that I want to point your attention to and pause here for just a second. I know it's a, it's a bar chart and the numbers are a little bit small, maybe for the audience to read. But this is for people that are desiring resources. We asked two different questions in this, in this category, whether they were interested in case management and whether they were interested in shelter. And so the way, the easiest way for me to look at this is the number on the bottom, the dark blue, are those that said no. So are you interested in case management? 22.9% said no. So the other way of looking at that is that, let's see, if that's, if that's 23 rounding up, then what, 77% either are interested in case management or they're currently enrolled with some case management service. In case management, you know, when we define that in the field, it's just someone to come alongside you and help you navigate the system of care so that you can get connected to shelter and housing. And, and there's, we see that number as very high. I also see that number as high because you saw the earlier slide, we've done all those different censuses. We keep a compilation of all the responses, over 13,000 responses now to these surveys that we've asked. And this is a, this is a healthy number and a high number. For those that might say, well, the 23% don't want service, our experience as a service provider is that, again, this, you have to remember that this is the first interaction. So somebody, our teams, we try to employ nice people who are approachable and who are engaging and who are knowledgeable and who are culturally sensitive, but still, it's a stranger asking these questions. And so it's not unusual for people to say, no, 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 because really you haven't established any trust. What we find in our street outreach and engagement contracts is that when you can build that trust, then those numbers go, the resistance goes down because people really do want help and resources. And the same, same is true for shelter. That number is not unusual, that, the 42, 43% that are, that are saying no to shelter, it's not unusual. Again, but what we find is that if, if there's an ongoing relationship between an outreach and engagement agency and the homeless population, that that number will go down because it's really just a matter of trust. And you have to remember again, that though we try to be as sensitive as we can, we're essentially strangers who are engaging in some serious questions about people who are experiencing homelessness and they may be coming from a place of trauma or crisis that may be quite immediate. We don't know. We just pull up and we ask the questions. Looking at some of the data comparison between the three different years now that we've done, just highlighting a few of the things that we felt like were interesting to us. The first and probably the most important one for all of you is just the overall number. You can see the trend line in the three years that we've done this has gone down. It's not a huge number from our perspective relative to what some of your neighbors are experiencing in other cities and other municipalities and their, their experience of homelessness. But it's also trending in a very positive direction. And I can say, having done lots of these censuses and operating in all these cities, when I make these presentations, it's not always this way. Generally, most cities are experiencing increase in their homelessness and if they're even holding steady or kind of close to holding steady, we encourage them and tell them that we think that they're doing a good job because the economic forces are not changing that are causing people to fall into homelessness. And so if we see it this way, it really stands out to us, meaning, this way meaning the numbers going down, that indicates that something really encouraging is happening here in the city. So that's, I think this is kind of the headline takeaway from our perspective. And if there's one sort of slide that you would want to kind of star and highlight in your presentation, this would be it from my perspective. We tracked the geography over the three years just to see if there were, if there was some consistency. And as you can see, it's kind of along the major thoroughfares in the city is where we identified people over the three different years. Again, we, this is all using the GIS technology and the phones. We did a Venn diagram of who appeared in the three different censuses and these numbers are usually typically pretty low. And, and that's because, again, it's, this, though we spend lots of time on this, it's really just two different occasions that we're going out. And homelessness is fluid in the sense that people, like I said earlier, they lack a fixed permanent address and so they can move back and forth between cities. But even as common or perhaps more common is people moving in and out of homelessness. There are really a lot of, there are people who are chronically homeless, who are homeless 365 days a year in your community and you may know some of them, and those may be some of the people that appeared in multiple censuses or, as you can see, there were three individuals that we encountered all three, all three years. That's the three in the, in the middle there. But more common is people that have a, they're really unstable in their housing and they've got kind of a patchwork approach. And so part of the year they're homeless and part of the year... And so part of the year they're homeless, and part of the year they may be in apartment, part of the year they may be with friends, they may be crashing on couches, they may be in motels. And so it's just a matter of when, during the course of the year, are they homeless and when are they housed? And so, again, if you go back to this number, my sense is that, you know, this number is representative of a larger group of people that might experience homelessness in your city over the course of an entire year. Because there were people on these dates that were housed, that might fall out of housing later on in the year. And vice versa, there were people that are unhoused that we encountered that might resolve their homelessness. We hope that that's true in one way or another. But typically, this is representative of a larger group of people. But again, the overall numbers are trending in a very positive and encouraging direction for your city. Our recommendations, you know, just some general things, again, based on doing this for lots of different cities. And what we see here in Paramount is that investments yield results. So we were aware that over many years now, the LA Sheriff's Department has increased their homelessness training and focus, and we've seen positive results from that. Local street outreach and engagement, having people that are invested in making those connections and helping homeless neighbors to navigate the system of care. And then I put in COVID-19 investments, just because even though, you know, we're still dealing with COVID, as you all, I'm sure you're aware, there was lots of funding that was released from the state and from the federal government during the COVID time. And one of the interesting things as service providers that we saw is that lots of homeless neighbors were able to end their experience of homelessness because COVID released those funds. And so we just see that this is a cause that responds to investments. We would encourage you to seek out regional partnerships related to emergency shelter and permanent housing. Services should be offered in English and Spanish, which I believe that they are, but we just found a lot of people that speak Spanish as their primary language in this city. And then the long-term need equals, is housing. And so anything that the city can do to invest in additional housing in the city will pay off in the long run to address those that are experiencing homelessness and those that are on the margins. We'd like to thank the city, the many departments of the city that you've got here, the Sheriff's Department, Public Safety, and then also the homeless neighbors that agreed to speak with us and to share their stories with us so that we could aggregate their data and then report it back to you. Nobody was compelled to speak with us. We did offer a small, you know, gift card as a thank you for those that did participate. But for the most part, people talk to us and they share their story and they participate in these censuses because they're interested in receiving services. And they're interested in providing you, as the elected officials, with the information that you need to know to make wise decisions because they're hopeful for a system of care that can help them in their experience of homelessness. And with that, I will, I have my email address on the screen. You can contact me there, or I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Yes, counsel, any comments or questions? All right, Mr. Bates, thank you so much for your informative report. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we have a report on the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department Drone Deployment Program. Mr. Manager, may I please have a report?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, you may recall at the City Council Goal Setting Session that we held in January that the City Council requested that staff look into using a drone to address street intersection takeover. So, but rather than purchasing a drone and then testing it after we invested the money into it, we discovered that the Sheriff's Department actually has a couple of drones. So we took advantage of that situation. And then using the department's drone, our deputies experimented with this type of tool in real time for this type of criminal activity. So the presentation that's coming up here is going to be a dual presentation. First off, we're going to go with Assistant Public Safety Director Eric Wosick, who will give some background about this. And then Lieutenant Joe Morales will then report back on how the pilot drone program actually went. So again, we'll kick it off with Eric Wosick, our Assistant Public Safety Director. Eric?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. As John stated, Lieutenant Morales and I are going to be reviewing LST's drone deployment for our drone pilot program. First, a little background. So it was first brought up at the special city council meeting on November 2nd. Council asked Public Safety to look into the possibility of drones being used as a support tool to help us with our street racing and intersection takeover enforcement efforts. So following up on that, staff met with LST Special Enforcement Bureau, who have their own drone program, as John mentioned. And we met with Lieutenant David Alner, and he actually oversees, directly oversees their drone program. So what we relayed to him is what we were trying, hoping to accomplish by deploying drones to kind of help us with our response to street takeovers and street racing. And he said the primary criteria the SEB has to establish to be able to deploy drones is that the underlying violation has to be a high-risk activity. So we were able to articulate him the dangers that street racing and takeovers pose, not just to the crazy people doing the donuts and doing the criminal activity, also the spectators, also pedestrians, also other drivers, and the officers that are responding themselves. And so by articulating that to him, SEB agreed that this was a high-risk activity, and they agreed to allow us to implement a drone team into the special assignment officers' street racing operations. And he also shared with us that this was an innovative approach. This was the first time the county had ever used drones in this capacity. So usually drones were primarily used by the county for slower-evolving crime or remote or inaccessible areas. So they gave the example of an individual on foot stealing metal from a remote train tracks, for example. They were able to use the drone, they can see him, the individual's moving slowly, and then they can track where he's going to exit so that LST can then respond and contact the suspect. So this was a very different use type that they weren't used to, and that we were all going to kind of find out how it worked together. And we were excited because not only was it going to help our SAO team and their enforcement, but also, as John mentioned, we were pursuing, purchasing a drone for ourselves. And SEB has a wide variety of drones. They have all different sizes and types and features. And so they were going to deploy multiple drones during each operation so that we could evaluate which drone would work best for us when we purchased a non-sworn drone for deployment. So that was a great added benefit as well. The goal for our drone program, LST's drone program, was really three-pronged. So we were hoping, we were envisioning that drones would provide this aerial coverage of a street takeover, for example, or a street racing activity, and that that would help us get identifying features of the bad vehicles, the number of spectators, the direction they're leaving, so that LST could contact them away from the big event and all of the hazards that are associated with that. So we were hoping that would provide information for LST and the deputies that are actively responding, that maybe we could capture footage or record footage, and that would help them develop warrants and vehicle seizures on the backend post-violation. And then also just increase officer safety by allowing them to avoid the mass crowds and all the vehicles, and maybe create T-stops after the vehicle left the area. So officer safety was the third prong. Unfortunately, we discovered that we weren't able to meet all of our expectations, but to give you a little more on the actual implementation of drones in our LST's operations, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Morales.
Good evening, everybody. So like Eric said, we met with SEB, our Special Enforcement Bureau Lieutenant Dave Alner. And it was nice because Dave used to be a Paramount Service Area Lieutenant, so he knew the city. We were able to communicate with him exactly what we wanted to do. And what we decided to do was test drive, or test two different dates in April, where we would use a drone in conjunction with a street racing enforcement. We chose these two dates in April because they're typically busy dates, but not too busy to, we kind of, we just kind of wanted to get off the ground running and test out all the bugs, give it a dry run a couple times before we really tried to get into like an active Saturday night or something like that. So we chose those dates, and here's what we found. When we did that, on April 4th and April 11th, the drone pilot program was implemented, and we used multiple drones during that time. So what we discovered was that there was a 20-minute pre-flight preparation process for each drone, that it took a little bit of time to get it up and running. And a lot of times, if there was firmware or software developments or upgrades that needed to happen, that would delay the process. So what we did was we had a pilot and an observer set up in an area where we know they like to practice street racing a lot. We had them out of sight, and we had them at a position where if there was activity, they could send a drone out there. So what we found was that they had to be at a stationary position. In other words, we envisioned, hey, let's send a drone out there, maybe we can have a driver drive the vehicle while the observer, the pilot, is operating the drone. That way we could follow a car away. But we discovered that wasn't, we weren't able to do that. The drones actually require a clear line of sight, and it's only an unobstructed view for about a quarter of a mile. So in other words, we can't have somebody follow a vehicle that was involved in a street racing event and have the drone continuously monitor that vehicle. We also weren't able to record. LST drones, for privacy and FAA regulations, we are not able to record those videos. So we could see a live stream, but it's not a recording that we could use. The battery capability of the drones is only about 15 minutes. So basically, when a drone is launched, it could be airborne for about 15 minutes before having to come back to recharge. So what we wanted to do, like I said, was use the drones in the street racing surveillance operations. And we just kind of found that it just really wasn't practical. Because in a perfect world, it would be practical and efficient in a perfect world where we knew, hey, Saturday night on Downey and Alondra, there's going to be a street takeover at midnight. We know that's going to happen. We have everybody set up. We could have a team set up with the drone, all ready to go, pre-flight's done, and then we have it in the air, and then it happens, and then we get the information. But that doesn't happen. These street racing events are very unpredictable. They don't always follow the same pattern. Like, we've had Wednesdays and Thursdays been the most active days for us within the past couple months. We've had some Saturday activities that's now starting to creep up again, but for a long time, it was weekdays. So really, it's not practical to have somebody just sitting around and waiting because they could happen at any time. There's really other more efficient ways to combat street racing that I think Eric's going to talk to you about a little bit right now. So talk about that.
And so, like Lieutenant Morales mentioned, we weren't able to kind of achieve the goals that we were hoping for with the drone program. He didn't share it, but there was an example on the April 4th operation where they tried to get the drone to follow a car that they'd caught red-handed doing donuts and sped off. They weren't able to have the drone follow that. So good old-fashioned police work. They had a black-and-white actually pull the vehicle over. They were able to arrest the driver and seize the vehicle. So they, LST utilizes undercover cars. They utilize their inter-agency operations with these task forces. So there are other more analog methods of accomplishing the enforcement that we want. And then to add to that, we were able to accomplish some of the goals that we originally intended for the drone pilot program through other means. So recently, we added reckless driving to our street racing ordinance. And the reason why we added this violation to be included in that was it allowed deputies to pursue post-violation warrants and vehicle seizures after the fact, which was one of the goals we were hoping drones would help us with. So that was accomplished through adding reckless driving. And then City Council also recently approved us to install six Flock Security Point-Tilt-Zoom surveillance cameras at our major intersections and takeover hotspots throughout the city. And that's going to provide real-time data transmitted to deputies so they have that information responding. And it can also record, so the post-violation warrants and vehicle seizures that we were hoping the drone would give us, those surveillance cameras can accomplish that. So we're still trying to come up with innovative ways, trying to come up with creative solutions to meet the goals we originally thought maybe drones would help us accomplish that they didn't really, weren't really able to help us accomplish. And so we'll keep, we'll keep going back to the drawing board, and this isn't the last innovative approach I know that we're going to come up with. I'd also like to make note that the information presented to you was also presented to the Public Safety Commission at our July 16th meeting, and they voted to recommend to council that we discontinue the drone pilot program and reallocate the funding that we have dedicated to the program. And since we're speaking about funding, I'd like to review the fiscal impact. So we had $30,000 allocated in this fiscal year for, under the City Council priorities for the drone pilot program. Reallocating those funds would help us with our Flock Security Camera System and then the associated Aero Bureau Services that support that. And why do helicopter services tie into Flock Security Cameras? Well, we have 20 license plate reader cameras under our Flock system contracted right now, and six of those Point-Tilt-Zoom surveillance cameras contracted. And as they detect violations out in the field, LST has a protocol where they'll respond to those hits. And for officer safety, Aero Bureau Services, the helicopter has to respond to support them. So as we've seen the number of cameras installed throughout the city go up, we've seen the number of violations we're detecting go up, and we've seen the corresponding increase in helicopter services that provide that officer support. So more bad guys getting caught, good news; higher helicopter expenses, bad news. So annually, we spend about 50 grand on the 20 LPR cameras. We spend $18,000 on the six contracted Point-Tilt-Zoom cameras. And I've listed there, you can see how we've increased significantly our helicopter services contract. So before we started implementing these cameras, we were at like $26,000 a year. And afterwards, we did our first 14 installation, it jumped to $64,000. Last year, it jumped to $88,000. And this year, we're projecting $96,000 in Aero Bureau Services expenses. So this $30,000 would help us with, reallocating would help us with Flock Security Camera Systems costs and Aero Bureau Services costs. With that, staff is recommending that we, that City Council approve the discontinuation of our drone pilot program and reallocate the funding that was budgeted for it towards our Flock Security Camera Systems and our Aero Bureau Services. Both me and the LT are available for any questions that you may have.
Okay, counsel, any comments or questions?
I have a question.
You go first.
So my first question would be, what sets us apart from Beverly Hills? When you said that we're not allowed to record Beverly Hills reports.
Yes.
Beverly Hills pursues. I mean, what's our problem?
Sure. Well, the infrastructure at Beverly Hills is significantly different than LA County Sheriff's Department. They have observers posted throughout the city. They also have like a lot of, what is that, what is that term, Eric? What was that?
It was, they have FAA annet, what they call.
Yeah, they have FAA exception that they can do that. Because the design.
What?
That they could, they don't need.
They can get around the line of sight requirement.
They get around that line of sight. We have a line of sight requirement, they don't necessarily have that requirement. So when we went to Beverly Hills, they have somebody in their dispatch monitoring things on a TV screen. But the LST doesn't have that type of, we're not able to do that. And the way, oh, I'm sorry.
Let's take one step at a time. Let's start with the recording. You still haven't told me why we can't record and they record.
So the way it was explained to me was that the FAA and other agencies that govern the drone use and the privacy concerns among citizens of the cities that it would affect, the smaller cities aren't regulated the way the Sheriff's Department is. We're the largest Sheriff's Department in the United States, and we have the most number of sworn personnel. So all the oversight is really over us, and we're allowed to do certain things that other cities can't do. In other words, if, let's say, Azusa PD wanted to implement a drone program, they're not going to have the same scrutiny as we're going to have. We have to abide by a set guideline, we have to abide by set guidelines, which is implemented by the FAA and in agreement with the Sheriff's Department. And those guidelines prevent us from taking a vehicle, using a drone, following somebody. It has to, there's clear parameters, and it's, the drones are used mostly for, I know Eric gave an example. gave an example, but the drone programs are used mostly by SEB for search and rescue operations. So like, let's say you have Malibu and you have a hiker lost, you have somebody that fell, you know, off a cliff or something like that. Those people are stationary, they're going to use the drones for those types of things.
I, I get what you're saying. So I mean, this is what I'm hearing, so correct me on anything I'm wrong on.
Sure.
Basically because of who you are as an entity, it handicaps the city.
I don't necessarily agree with it that way. I think that it wouldn't be practical anyway. I mean, if, if we were going to.
Let me tell you why I don't think it's practical the other way. Because what, what you've just told us are the alternatives require personnel.
Hmm.
And you have, it's the sheriff's department, not you.
Yeah, I know, I know.
You have a huge personnel issue right now. I mean, you can't give us the services that we need right now. And so that's why we were looking to something to augment that. So my first thought goes to, okay, so the sheriff's department can't do that. In your guys' research that you did, did you look into private entities, private security companies, private drone operators, you know, that may not have the restraints, better than handicap, right? Restraints that the sheriff's department has. Let me ask staff that question.
And yes, when we originally talked about having a non-sworn drone and drone program and deployment.
Right.
We did look into that. Line of sight would be required of us.
Well, if you're going to follow them. But what about the initial thing that the sheriff's department is saying that they can't do? Because one of the things we clarified in that meeting was that if we could get a drone over the site to take photos, then our city attorney told us that we could ticket them. If we could capture license plates, that we could issue tickets because we would have captured them in the committing of a crime. And so that's not following them, that's getting them over the site. And you said that you were over a site before because you went on to pursue and you could not do that. You could not complete that because of the restrictions. So.
The complication is that if it's a non-sworn drone, L A S D has to observe the violation themselves.
We were told that's not correct. So we need to get clarification from the attorney because that's the reason that we even went to explore this program. That specific question was asked to the city attorney and we were told no, that the film would be evidence of a crime taking place. No different than recently, it was my understanding, you guys got video from a Ring camera, which you didn't observe and were able to cite somebody because they showed you proof of speeding on a Ring camera.
I can attest to the Ring camera, I'm not sure what that is, but I can tell you that we've talked to Kelly Tatman and other, and other people involved in this. And it was made clear that the in-officer's presence is a requirement of the.
Well, I would say that's not the same information that we were given. And when we decided to research it, Tatman was asked. Because we followed back up and said, did we get an answer? And we were told yes. Tatman said, yes, we could do that. So all I can say on this particular item is I would not be willing to make a decision to withdraw funds now till we get correct information.
Okay. We could get that through a city attorney's office.
We're not operating on the same information.
True. So what do we do now?
Well, can I just say like the cameras that Eric was talking about, those would satisfy the in-officer's presence as long as we were able to livestream them, livestream them with like an iPad or some sort of device. So if, let's say early morning units had an iPad and they were livestreaming that, even if they weren't there, that satisfies the in-officer's presence. So as long as we could, we can say that, hey, there's a deputy who saw it via video, that satisfies it.
And it does make a difference if the deputy sees the video, which source it came from, you're saying?
No. It's, it's got to be live.
Okay. So we livestream, when we send the drone up, we make it a livestream.
But.
Okay? And it's not you observing it because you're saying that there's an issue with that. What's the difference? I don't understand.
Well, the difference is, is that we're not going to get a drone up in time because we don't know when these things happen. So the chances of getting a drone up in time to see anything.
You're saying that it's, that it took about a 20-minute setup. I don't know why it couldn't be set up for the night ahead of time and ready to deploy. These are things that I need to understand before I wipe it off the map and say that it's not possible. If it's set up and ready to go, these street racing things that we're getting complaints about are sometimes going on for 30, 40 minutes.
Okay.
That's what we're hearing. So why isn't there enough time to get it there?
So let's, so let's say hypothetically speaking, there was a street takeover on Garfield and Alondra. But our drone was set up on the east side of town. Let's say this street takeover, which typically happens within minutes, we're not going to get the drone from the east side of town to that location in time to get any pertinent relevant data. It's going to be broken up by then or they're going to be dispersed.
And I think what we're going back to, because what you're kind of saying is they almost have to be on the corner with the drone from where it is because that's that line of sight issue that you're impeded by, that Beverly Hills doesn't appear to be impeded by.
Yeah.
And that's what I want clarification on. Who do we have to petition for that? You know? Is it possible?
How do we change the FAA guidelines?
Yeah.
Yeah. We change the guidelines. I mean, Beverly Hills should not be able to get better service than the city of Paramount if we're willing to go for it. So if, I want to know why.
Hmm.
I mean, and I want to explore all those avenues till they're exhausted because I do not see in the near future, the issues that the sheriff's department is having with the shortage of personnel improving. And we have to look to other avenues.
Well, ma'am, with all due respect, it's not necessarily a shortage of personnel that's preventing us from doing that. I think we've kind of misunderstood.
I would disagree with you in that every time we check into why didn't they get there, they were deployed somewhere else on another urgent call and we didn't have the personnel to send them.
Well, I'm just talking in regards to the drone program. It's not a shortage of personnel for a drone program.
No, but we're talking two different programs.
Oh, yeah, like, just like.
Like you're saying, yeah, yours is the line of sight issue, it appears to be.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so you're restricted because of that, because of the entity that you are. I understand that. You can't help what you're restricted to.
Yeah.
I'm saying, is it possible for us to move outside of that? With another service? Just like how we, you know, got security services for the shortages that we weren't able to fill.
Right.
So I just want to explore that.
Okay.
Because we need to look at all possible options because this situation is not getting any better. I mean, I think what I read in the email that I got, what were there, four last weekend? They were all four in the same.
We had, we had, we had three.
Three in one night.
At three in one night.
That's no improvement. That's no improvement. And two of them basically had no interference with citations or anything because of stuff. Can't remember all the issues, but.
Well, I can tell you that.
Only one of the street racing incidents was able to have citation issue, citations issued. And that's the main crux of what we were hoping would be a deterrent. If it only happens one out of three times, that's not much of a deterrent.
Okay.
So I'm just, that's my position. I'm not ready to table it until we explore all possible options of making it work. I, I want more information from Beverly Hills. We have to set up a meeting with them. Let's set up a meeting with them. How did you go about getting that clearance? What's the way around it?
That's a very good idea.
You know, elected officials, do we have to talk to? Why should we not be able to get the same benefits of technology that cities who are wealthy can if we're willing to pay for it?
Sure. Just the, the way I understood it, and I'll have Maggie jump in here, the difference between us and Beverly Hills. Because our, our staff did, did visit Beverly Hills, including the lieutenant. Their FAA license, as Eric explained it, is like a net. It's like a dome over their city. Because they have a PD that can operate within their jurisdiction with a dome over it. So they were able to get a license for that.
Yeah.
The way I understood it is that the sheriff's department is so large, where do you cut off this net?
We should have a net all over LA County. We're happy.
Okay, there you go. That's all over LA County.
Sheriff Lou, now here he comes.
We'll see.
We understand that. And so that's what we're saying is, okay, how do we either get our own net or how do we get legislators to understand everybody needs access to this technology?
Sure, sure.
And John, if I may, just add that, just doing the research and trying to actually deploy an independent drone program, one of the challenges that we came across is the fact that, let's just say that public safety does go out and we start deploying our own drone. It is clear just per Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department policy that we're not able to utilize their equipment. So we may be able to view, capture and see all that, but we wouldn't be able to utilize a sheriff's radio to communicate with them because then they, they would be working outside of their policy.
We understand that. But again, this goes back to getting correct information from the district attorney's office, Tatman. We were told we could cite them. So if she's saying that that's a legal course and we find out that operating it ourselves, we can record because it's not the sheriff's with their restrictions, and we say, here's the recordings, and the district attorney says you can cite based on having this action videotaped, give them a citation. But right now, we have conflicting information.
Correct. And, and the way the, the code reads is it has to be viewed by law enforcement.
But that's not what we were told.
Yes. And I apologize that it, this has caused a lot of confusion. I know that in a perfect world, it would be ideal for us to be able to exercise, but we just don't have that police authority. It has to be a sworn law enforcement officer viewing that evidence and then going out and pursuing a warrant.
Okay. So what I'm saying to you is get clarification back from Kelly.
Absolutely.
Because we were told, you did talk to Kelly and that's what Kelly said. And go back to our city attorney here, who, who said that they made that attempt to meet with the district attorney and clarified all this. Otherwise, we'd never would have went down this lane. There would have been no purpose in it.
Right. Okay. We will definitely get clarification on that.
Yes, thank you.
I don't call a motion to reexpose this or.
I'm calling, I'm making.
Madam Mayor, I would say first ask to your colleagues if there's other, other questions.
That was my comment.
Yeah, I don't even know where to go anymore with this.
I'm over here to the left. Council members, any comments or questions?
Well, I have a comment. I, I just have a comment. Okay. I was trying to renew, I mean, my homeowner's insurance. I was told by the new insurance company, because my old insurance company wouldn't renew my insurance because I had a claim. And then I did a half, they call it a half-claim. But anyway, they denied me and they wouldn't renew me. So I went to a new company. So anyway, they had a drone that went over my house. And I don't know where in the world it came from, but it was, it was over my house for quite a period of a time. And I was like, well, how did this thing come to my house? So I couldn't figure out where it came from. And I wasn't going to call the sheriff's and say, well, I have a drone going around, around my house. But it came out that the insurance called me and told me, oh, Ms. Dolings, we observed this and this and this about your house. And I go, well, how did you do that when you had no access to my backyard? But how do they have access to say the company's back east? Because that's where it's from. But they had a drone come to my house.
Commercial and private drone deployment or operations are just much different than the requirements for.
From the sheriff's department.
For law enforcement, yeah. So it comes from, you'll see people taking pictures with drones too, right? So they'll go over and take pictures of events and stuff like that. So the commercial use of drones is very common. It's just, we run into complications when you get law enforcement and enforcement.
Because we have a drone when we have events.
Yeah.
But that's through a private company.
They basically told us they have certain restrictions that apply just to the sheriff's department. And that's why I'm saying, we need to use our information and find out, how do we go about lifting those restrictions, lobbying to get them lifted? Find out if a private company would have more latitude than they do? There's a whole lot of unanswered questions here before we just settle. And that's what I feel like we would be doing. I don't think that allocating it to the helicopter from, again, the experience that we've just had, I, I don't see any improvement in what's happening there. The cameras, maybe at more sites, I'm not necessarily opposed to that. But I don't, I just don't feel I have the answers to say, yeah, let's give up. I, I don't feel that way yet.
So you have restrictions.
Yeah. Law enforcement, not necessarily.
LA County has restrictions.
Madam Mayor, I'm just going to make a quick, it's going to be the quickest comment ever. So.
Okay.
Don't laugh, but I, yeah, there was a, a street incident on Saturday that I got stuck in. And I almost thought I was going to get a ticket for being a spectator because, you know me, but, but anyways, Maggie, when we reached out, you guys gave me, you know, I know that there's no citations were given because our deputies were very busy at another site. But you said Bellflower came in. But Bellflower was unable to cite because they don't know what our ordinances are? Is that?
That is correct.
So is that like a, maybe a, a collaboration with Bellflower so them to train on our ordinances to be able to cite? Or I don't know, that's.
That's, that would be better answered by you, Lieutenant.
Yeah, no problem. So we trained all the deputies assigned to Paramount and how to give a spectator citations and so forth. But you know, Paramount is part of Lakewood Station.
Sure.
So we're going to have deputies coming from Artesia, Hawaiian Gardens, Bellflower and so forth that are assigned to those cities in times when it's really busy. Like that particular night, we had two pretty significant incidents that, that took a lot of our resources. So most of the people that responded were not regular Paramount deputies. I, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. I don't think if we, we can't really train the Bellflower deputies. We can tell them, this is what, when, we tell them, this is what we do. But as far as holding them to the same accountability as all the deputies assigned to Paramount, you know, I don't think that we can necessarily do that. But when they, what we do do is we tell the deputies that are assigned to Paramount, hey, if other people are coming in, you show them how, how we do things. And so it's not a formal training that we do with the Paramount deputies, but we do have people to guide them in those types of things. Like if, if there's a Paramount deputy and two deputies from Artesia that are coming to help out at a street takeover and, and they detain somebody, well, they're going to be shown, hey, this is what we have, why don't you use this? And they'll give them some spectator sites and conduct an investigation as appropriate.
Right.
So I don't want you to think like they're not going to do anything because that, that's far from the truth. But they're not trained in the way that Paramount does things. Like they're not going to have spectator sites for Paramount if they work in Artesia.
Right. But you said they're not going to do anything. They, they weren't able to do anything, right? I mean, I saw them pull up and they parked and they did their lights.
They didn't have the training and the information.
That's what I'm saying.
To know to ticket. And he's saying to cross-train somebody who regularly serves Bellflower is probably not going to be possible.
No, but is that like your answer or is that like a Sheriff Luna answer? Like I'm just as LA County Sheriff.
I can't speak for Sheriff Luna.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, because you guys are big. LA County Sheriff is huge. You know, I mean, you guys are all, you guys all help each other in other cities. I've noticed that, right?
I can tell you, I'll be honest with you, Brenda, we're not going to bat a thousand on street takeovers. There's, they're unpredictable. They, they happen. They, we went a long time without really having a lot of them. They were very isolated incidences. And I know we've had an uptick in the last, you know, couple of days, but it really hasn't been an epidemic all year long. We've impounded, we've taken so many for asset forfeiture. This year, I think more than we ever have in the, in the last two years. So we've been taking these vehicles and we've been working with the task force.
Yeah.
But I, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that we're going to bat a thousand on it because if you have a night when we have gunshot victims and you have some other significant incidents that happen.
I get it.
You know, we're, we're going to use our resources as best we can. And sometimes all we can do is, is break it up and, and shoo them on their way. But I think with some of the things that Eric was talking about, specifically those cameras, those are giving us the tools to conduct follow-up investigations, which allows us to go get those cars, take them off the street and, and do other investigations, investigations that I think will be very proactive and very helpful. But sometimes, you know, we're going to break it up. We will always try to get citations and impound vehicles, but it's very difficult to get that one car doing the donuts when you got, you know, 50 other ones blocking the intersection. And I've spoke to you before about, you know, our policies that prevent us from going into vehicle pursuit or something like that. But there's other things that we can use, and I think they've been very effective. And I'm sorry, the drone program wasn't like what you guys thought it was gonna be. I was really hoping it was gonna work well, and we'll get you those answers that you need, but it just wasn't practical in a real-time sense. And I would hate to see you spend so much money on something that maybe is only gonna work once in a great while, where.
Thank you for that, and we wouldn't want to do that either. And I need to be really clear with you, this is no way pointing the fingers and blaming the sheriffs.
Oh, yeah, I know.
We have restrictions on you. And our thing is that, we know, I mean, you guys are what, having to work triples now, you know, to cover? We know how stretched you are, and that's why I'm saying, we have to push, we have to push technology.
Yes.
We have to. We have to find out, how do we get the same consideration as the people who have low crime?
I understand, ma'am, 100%. I could just promise you, like, that we will do our best to combat street racing as much as possible. And I'm telling you, if I knew it was gonna happen every night at this particular step, we would have people laying in wait, just waiting to come out of the shadows and grab them, but unfortunately, that's just not the way it works.
Available, I'm available, let me know.
Okay.
I'm ready, let me at him.
He's not joking, not joking.
But yeah, we'll definitely talk, and, you know, Maggie and Eric, they're instrumental in helping us, giving us all the resources that we need, and we know it's a priority, and we know it's important. So, we're gonna continue to do our best, because.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Mayor, so it sounds like we will continue this item to a future meeting.
So motion to continue.
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilmember Aguayo.
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos.
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lemmons.
Yes.
Mayor Delgadoio.
Yes. Next, we have consideration of a proposal from Wildan Engineering for preparation of a grade separation study for the West Santa Ana Bike Way and Pedestrian Trial, excuse me, Trail Phase III. Mr. City Manager, may we have the report?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. Next item is, as you mentioned, approval contract with our engineering firm, Wildan, to conduct a study. The project that we have going on in the bike way hit a little snag recently. The bike way needs to cross an active railroad track. Our engineers' design included an at-grade, which is, you know, level crossing at this active railroad track. However, the railroad told us, this type of crossing is not gonna work for them, so we need to explore other options. So we need a report that analyzes these options, and our Public Works Director, Adriana Figueroa, will tell you more about this. Adriana.
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, this is a little bit of background on our bike way trail, but for the interest of, in the interest of time, I think you've seen this before, so I'm gonna move on to the meat of the presentation. So Phase III of the West Santa Ana Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail between Rosecrans Avenue and Garfield Avenue is situated within a utility corridor, which belongs to the City of L.A. Department of Water and Power and also Metro. This is a section that is circled here on the map to the left. This section crosses, as John indicated, an active Union Pacific Railroad freight track. Proper signal improvements were identified during the design in those documents, in order to meet safety guidelines at the crossing. However, Union Pacific is recommending a grade separation, which is essentially a tunnel or a bridge, that would involve extensive technical and feasibility analysis. That section is seen in the image to the right, and these types of requirements are governed by the California Public Utilities Commission. Here's a close-up of the image of the crossing itself, which is located, again, this is between Garfield and Paramount Boulevard, along that utility right-of-way. The image on your left shows the proposed bike way trail crossing at the rail line, delineated in blue, and the picture on your right of the screen shows approximately where the crossing would be. Staff requested a proposal from Wildan Engineering for professional engineering services to prepare a grade separation study for our bike way trail project, Phase III. The proposal in the agenda report has been revised, in fact, you have a copy of the revised proposal itself from Wildan on your desk. And it has been revised to a lower amount, totaling $173,655. As indicated, the City Clerk provided you with copies. The scope of this service includes the preparation of a grade separation study called a GSS to evaluate the feasibility of a grade separation crossing of the bike way and Union Pacific Railroad Track. This report will identify the most feasible alternative for the crossing that meets the city's objectives and also CPUC requirements. As indicated earlier, this is an extensive analysis that will take approximately six months to prepare. Once completed, we'll send this to the CPUC for review and approval. However, that review will likely take a few months to process. This has now created a significant roadblock to getting the project ready for construction. And unfortunately, this added delay has now jeopardized the funding for construction that had been secured through the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. We had been approved for approximately $2.5 million. That included both design and construction. We've spent approximately $150,000 in design, and because construction will not be possible within the timeframe of the grant, the construction funding allocation will have to go back to the RMC. We have been in close communications with the RMC about this unanticipated delay, and they have been very understanding, and they are, however, limited to granting extensions since this particular state funds have a funding deadline. They have offered to work with us in the future to submit a new application later, once this significant hurdle is overcome. In terms of the analysis needed, the cost for it is $173,655. This was not included in the fiscal year '25 budget, as this just came up. An appropriation of this amount will be needed utilizing Measure R funds. So with that, it is recommended that the City Council, one, appropriate $173,700 utilizing Measure R funds for the grade separation study, and authorize Wildan Engineering to prepare that GSS report for the project. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions that may come up.
Okay, comments, council, anyone has comments or questions? Okay, I call for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, please take a roll call.
Councilmember Aguayo.
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos.
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lemmons.
One moment, please. Yes.
Thank you. By, Mayor Delgadoio.
Yes. Okay, next we have the award of contract for the Neighborhood Street Resurfacing Project. Mr. City Manager, may I have the report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it's that time of year again, we are going, we went out to bid for our annual street paving project, and this is for smaller residential streets. Here's Adriana Figueroa to go over the streets, and that will be paved, and who the contractor is. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, each year, the city allocates funding for our Neighborhood Streets Resurfacing Project. This includes grinding down the asphalt and repaving streets, replacing damaged curb and gutter, repairing sidewalks, laryngeal pavement, and installing ADA curb ramps to ensure proper access for all pedestrians. These repairs are planned based on the recommendations of the pavement management system, and this is a report completed by our city engineering firm, Wildan Engineering. The report is a comprehensive review of the condition of all city streets within Paramount boundaries, and identifies those streets in most need of repair. The fiscal year '24 budget includes capital improved project number 9431, under which the following streets will be resurfaced. We have Madison Street, east of Downey Avenue, Verdura Avenue, south of Madison to Chester Street, and then also Chester Street, east of Verdura. Exeter is also listed, west of Garfield. We also have Chester Street from Hader to Lakewood Boulevard. And we're also including, this time around, an alleyway, and this is located north of All-American Park. It is north of Alhambra Avenue from the city limit to Merkel Avenue. Bids for this project were open on July 2nd. Four bids were received, with the apparent low bid submitted by Sequel Contractors, Inc., in the amount of $1,477,355. The project cost, once a 10% contingency is added, totals a little over $1.6 million. In terms of funding, a little over $1 million was included in the fiscal year '25 CIP budget, utilizing RMRA, or also known as SB1 funds. To cover the remaining cost, an additional $400,000 will be needed from our SB1 funds, and $163,000 from our Measure M allocation. So with that, it is recommended that the City Council, one, appropriate the additional $400,000 from the SB1 fund, and $163,000 from Measure M to cover the total cost of the project, and, two, award the contract for the Neighborhood Streets Resurfacing to Sequel Contractors, Inc., in the amount of $1,477,355. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Council, any comments or questions?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay. Tadee, Mr. City Clerk, could you please take a roll call?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Aguayo.
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos.
Yes.
Councilwoman Quara Stallings.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lemmons. Mayor Delgadoio.
Yes. Next, we have consideration of ordinance number 1187, providing for the electronic and paperless filing of campaign finance disclosure and economic interest statements. Mr. City Manager, may I have the report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we're all gonna love this one. We're continuing on a quest to be more efficient, go paperless, as you just introduced this item. This next item does help us in this quest of ours. We wanna use an electronic filing system so that campaign documents can be filed electronically. Right now, they must be all done on paper. So with that, I'll turn it over to Heidi Luce, our City Clerk, who will handle this item. Heidi?
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. I'm so excited to be your very last presentation tonight.
Not more than we are.
Before you this evening, as John said, is an ordinance which would update the city's municipal code to allow for the electronic and paperless filing of FPPC forms. By way of background, as part of the budget adoption process, funds were allocated to procure an electronic system to provide a more efficient process for filing and managing these documents. Staff researched options for an electronic filing system, and under the city manager's authority, the city recently entered into agreement with NetFile to provide this service. NetFile is a leader in this field in California, providing an electronic filing platform to over 180 cities and 32 counties in the state. In order for the city to accept electronically filed campaign finance disclosure documents specifically, the City Council needs to adopt an ordinance approving the use of an electronic filing system that includes a legislative finding that the electronic system will operate securely and effectively, and will not unduly burden filers. In terms of security, the NetFile system is a web-based, vendor-hosted application that utilizes industry-best practices for securing data, using the same data encryption for online filings that is used by banks for online banking. NetFile stores and backs up data at two separate locations, creating the essential safety measures and redundancy that allow for the recovery of information in the event of an emergency or disaster. The NetFile system accommodates online filing of the campaign finance disclosure documents required by the FPPC. The system also accommodates the filing of FPPC Form 700, Statements of Economic Interest, and provides access to on-demand ethics training for elected and appointed officials, as well as city staff. The ethics training course, as you know, educates individuals on the ethical standards required of local officials and those who work in local government, and meets the state-mandated training under Assembly Bill 1234. Ordinance number 1187, presented for consideration this evening, makes the necessary findings to add Chapter 2.08 to the city's municipal code to allow for the electronic and paperless filing of campaign finance disclosure documents and statements of economic interest. The ordinance is drafted to allow for paperless filing, but does not mandate it. However, once a candidate submits their campaign finance disclosure documents manually, all future submissions must also be submitted electronically. So with that, it is recommended that the City Council read by title only, waive further reading, introduce ordinance number 1187, and place it on the August 27th agenda for adoption. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, so, City Council, are there any comments or questions?
No. Move the item.
All right, we move it, and, Mr. City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please? Oh, excuse me, I didn't hear a second.
I said, she's moving.
Yeah, I, Bellma moved it, I second.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Aguayo.
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos.
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings.
Of course.
Vice Mayor Lemmons.
Yes.
Mayor Delgadoio.
Yes. Now it is time for comments and committee reports. We'll begin with Vice Mayor Lemmons.
Thank you, Mayor. In the interest of time, let me just say, I attended a lot of events, went to a lot of committee meetings. Thank you, staff, for all of your support, and all of those, you're fantastic.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Aguayo.
Yeah, real quick, today, I know that the Fire Department, paramedics, and our sheriff's department were really busy this morning with just all kinds of stuff that we don't wanna, you know, hear about on the second day of school, but they really handled it beautifully, because, you know, as best as they could. But, yeah, they were really busy this morning, so thank you for, you know, doing, you know, what you do and keeping our community safe. At that time, with all those kids walking, it was, I was very grateful, very grateful for all of our public safety, so thank you for that. Let me see, I think Steve is still here. Steve, thank you, I mean, we saw the report, and you're such a huge part of that, you know, along again with public safety, but thank you, kudos to you for being that bridge between a lot of our homeless neighbors, so thank you for that. Vector Control, Mosquito Club, as my kids call it, is asking for the cities to just share their stuff on our websites and social media, so I'm letting you guys know, I mean, Mosquito Club.
We will, right, Polly? All right.
I think that's pretty much it, just, you know, for all the students, you know, be safe, parents, you know, I mean, don't be in such a hurry to drop off your kids, that we have, you know, we have to call out on our, on our safety personnel, it shouldn't happen, so have a great 2024, 25 school year, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Olmos?
Yes, I'll make this quick. Heritage Festival, timing was right on point, I think the residents loved the new later time, but they wanted to last till like 9:00 or 10:00.
Yeah.
So, they were not done, they were not wanting to go home, because I think the night was perfect, weather was good, so kudos, you guys did a great job. Back-to-school event, again.
Yeah.
So many kids that came out, thank you to all the vendors, supporters that came out to support our kids for school. And I just wanna remind everybody that the Historical Society, we're having our first dance on Saturday, the theme is "Time of Your Life," so we're asking people to come dressed in their favorite era. So, my family will be all dressed in one era, we're not gonna say, it'll be a surprise. So it's gonna be at the Paramount Park, 4:00 to 7:00, $10 to get in, and $5 for seniors, 4:00 to 7:00, everybody can make that, so Peggy, I'm looking at you. So, come out and support the Historical Society.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Olmos.
They don't make my era clothing anymore.
Councilmember Quara Stallings?
I just, I attended several events with my colleagues, and I just wanna thank everyone that did the back-to-school and the festival, thank you, Leslie, Michelle, Isenya, everyone that was really involved, Michelle's, the other Michelle, too, that, you know, invites and gets our, our community all excited about dancing and raffles and things, but thank you, thank you, thank you. And also, Public Works, thank you for being out there and even picking up trash, or trying to direct families where, you know, which way they go, and crossing the street, and, oh, I love, love, love the little train, too bad, my little girls, my granddaughters aren't little, I saw Peggy running with her grandson in arms, and I was like, I wish my little girl, my girls were little, so I could run with them to the train, but I love the train. And my granddaughter did say, the youngest, she was, nanny, they didn't have that when I was little. So, I said, it was both of us, but anyway, thank you, thank you, beautiful event, heard nothing but great things, I even got a couple knocks at my door. I said, you know, I'm like, okay, you loved it, okay, but they, also, they loved it, they won, took like 9:00, 10:00 o'clock, exactly what Councilmember Olmos said.
It was great, 6:00 to 10:00 next year.
They love it, 10:00. I know, I know.
That's okay, I used to be at the 10:00, it was till 1:00 in the morning, I had no pity.
And also, thank Marlene, I forgot about Marlene. Thank you, Marlene, also for helping with the, with the, you know, being out there organizing and getting everybody, and Ramiro, too, he was out there. He was getting, making sure the line went smoothly from back-to-school night, so anyway, thank you all. And then, just to save time, I went to my COG meeting, I have a lot to report, but I'm not gonna report everything, but the main one is that the Metro is going to be helping families pay for your rides, there's gonna be a mobile wallet you can qualify, I'm gonna ask John if we can put this on social media. You have to have a certain income, but they're giving up, giving up to $1,800 for the whole year, so you can use it on the Metro bus, Metro rail, bike chair, electric scooters, you know, you name it, as long as it's electric, you can use that. Anyway, so, Madam Mayor, and then the last thing I wanna say is that the new homes on Orozaba Avenue, John and, and John, they're coming up, oh my God, they're, they're looking beautiful, from that little small area, you know, right on Orozaba and Jackson, oh my God, my cousin lives down a block away, and she said, oh, that's gonna improve my, my neighborhood, and it's gonna make my house, my, my property go up more, so anyway, she's excited, and her neighbors are excited. So, anyway, and then last, thank you, everyone, and like Councilmember Aguayo said, there's, there was a few things going on, and thank you, Deputy Sheriffs, and also, thank you, thank you, you know, there's a couple incidents that happened, that I seen, but thank you for everything that you do for our community, and our, even our students, sir, thank you so much, to all of you. Everybody have a good night, that's all I have, I have a lot more, but I'm not gonna say. Can I add something, Madam Mayor, before I forget how it went on?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. You know, a special shout-out to, you know, our buddies at, you know, Jaden's Place, that were at the back-to-school event, you know, doing their thing, too, you know, you are appreciated, that's for sure, so let our buddy know.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I am going to make this very short. Um, Fri-, I attended the Friday Night Paramount, and it was great to see the community enjoying themselves and dancing to the band that we had on stage, and sadly, that was the last summer concert of the season. And, you know, you did a remarkable job with everything, every band on Thursdays. Families enjoyed it, so we're all looking forward to next year, you know? It's going to be great, and it's going to be better. And also, um, I attended, um, the back-to-school supplies event. Kids, have fun, be positive, and learn all you can, because, you know, education is very important, and is very important to my heart for the students in our, in Paramount. Also, um, the Heritage Festival, well, you guys knocked it out of the park, it was great, it was wonderful, but we'll change the hours for next year so it's cooler for everyone in the community. And, uh, that's all I have for right now, but everyone, thank you so, so much. Um, Mr. Moreno, are there any comments from staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just two things. The first thing is, um, just a procedural thing, you'll notice after I'm done with my, uh, comments from staff, we do go over to the successor agency. It was recently determined by our now-retired city attorney that, um, we don't have to adjourn the, or recess the council and then go into the, the, the successor agency anymore. Um, so therefore, we will move this item up above, um, right at, right before comments from council and committee reports. That way, there's no confusion about, um, adjourning or recessing and then going back into the council meeting. Um, it's just similar to the sustainability, uh, portion of the agenda, it's just another part of the agenda, so. Um, the, the second comment that I have, or actually, second item, is, um, our budget at a glance for 2024-25 is out. I put it in Friday memo, the electronic version, a couple of weeks ago, but we just got, um, from our printer, um, the printed version, so I'll hand those out to you.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so take one, pass her down, and that's it.
That's it? Okay, so now, do I say we go into a closed session, or?
No, we'll go to the successor.
Okay. Okay, next, we have one item on the successor agency consent calendar. Is there a motion for this item?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Ms. City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo.
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos. Councilmember Quayle Stallings.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lemmons.
Yes.
Mayor Delgado.
Yes. Now, the city council recess into closed session. Mr. Moreno, will you please announce the closed-session item?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, uh, we will now be going into closed session for conference with legal counsel, potential initiation of litigation under Government Code Section 5495-6.9, subsection D4, one case. 5495-6.9, subsection D4, one case.
City Council meeting back to order in open session. Ms. Martin, may we please have the report from closed session?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. The city council discussed potential initiation of litigation or, and settlement to avoid initiation of litigation in some PFAS cases. Um, the city will be submitting settlement claims, and when they are settled and signed, they will be reporting the settlements, which will then become public.
Okay, thank you very much. There being no further business before the city council, this meeting is adjourned, um, is adjourned to a meeting on August 27, 2024, at 5:00 PM in the chamber, com, chamber,